All right, it's seven o'clock. Let's see, I'm gonna do the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start with roll call. I'll start with Megan Swaim Kooch. She's not here. Uh, Lucas Carradon here. Shawn Morrison.
Here.
Dave Webb.
Here.
Gary Klein.
Here.
Kayla Choussin.
Here.
Jeff Klein.
Here.
And George Pushes.
Here.
All right, so we have quorum. All right, so we're gonna start with the, uh, call to the, the first call to the public. Uh, seeing no one, we're gonna close the first call to the public and we'll move on to the, uh, approval of the May 8th meeting agenda. Has everybody taken a look at it? And, uh, do I have a vote for that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda as typed.
So Dave Webb makes a motion that we accept the, uh, meeting minutes as presented those.
Second the motion.
Shawn Morrison seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And it's approved. All right, we're gonna move on now to the approval of the April 10th meeting minutes. Does anybody got any comments on it, or? Since hearing none, I'll, um, ask for a motion to approve the April 10th, uh, meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we approve meeting minutes?
All right, Jeff Klein makes a motion, we accept the meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Dave Webb seconds it. All those in figures signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion is passed. All right, we're gonna move on to the communications report. Uh, we'll start with the zoning administrators' report.
Read. We had two land use permits last month. One was for a poll barn, one was for foundations, and four waivers. Two electrical and two reverse.
Is there any more communication about the weather station?
I got an email that I didn't read.
Okay.
From, I think it was their lawyer.
Okay. So nothing more than last month?
No, yeah, it's within the last letter. And then I'll re-dim and I'll forward that to the lawyers here.
Okay, and then the Wooderson County Planning Commission report and update? Nothing? All right. We are gonna move on to old business. Uh, we'll start with the zoning ordinance amendment, uh, number 2023-02, review draft of the new Article 19, solar energy system district replacement of this, replacement of existing section 6.26 regarding the solar energy systems. And it's been on hold, so we're gonna... We just got the, uh, draft copy today with all the changes that we talked about in our Friday, April 28th meeting. So we probably haven't, I haven't had a chance to read it all yet. I just got home from work, but, um, I think we have it posted up here now.
We do, um, and I'll introduce myself. My name is Laura Genovich. I'm Mike Homier's law partner at Foster Swift, and Mike had a scheduling conflict tonight, so I'm here in his stead. Um, this draft does reflect the changes discussed at the Friday night, uh, April 28th meeting. Um, certainly, this is still a working document, of course, and you may find some formatting issues that may need to be addressed, and there's certainly plenty of time to do that, given where we are at in the process. Um, but we wanted to get a clean version back to you. Um, so I suppose it's up to the planning commission. Do you want me to read the whole thing out loud, or what do you want to, how do you want to proceed?
It's on your, you should be in here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we got it in front of us. Um, I don't know if we don't.
I mean, I think that's what we did last month, is we read through the whole thing and fixed it all, and I think everybody was fine. I mean, I had to leave early last month, so I don't know if anybody had any questions at the end of the meeting or not, so. Was there any discussion at the end of the meeting that was, something was missing or needed to be added, or?
There was a couple of questions that I had. Um, we had talked about previously fire training, putting it in there annually for the local community.
Right.
But that's not mentioned anywhere in the draft.
Does that have to be in the draft, or should that be in the planning stage?
I mean, we can certainly add that in this draft. If I'm understanding correctly, would that require the operator of the solar energy system to provide that training? Or, or are you talking about something done independently from the operator?
If I remember correctly, it was the operator making sure, um, training was provided to the local fire department in case of an emergency situation.
Yeah, I remember discussion, but I forgot what the other one was.
So, I think there's a couple, and if these don't sufficiently address it, we can beef these up, but I'm gonna try to arrange the screen. Is there a light switch?
We're gonna shut, we're gonna shut the lights off.
Yeah, excellent.
And then close those two doors, I think. Well, thank you very much.
Wow, that's much easier.
We were just gonna send somebody else to do that, so.
So there's...
It shuts off itself.
Okay, okay. There are three parts that address training. The first is an application material, which requires a written description of specialized training and/or equipment necessary for handling fires and/or other emergencies of the utility-scale solar energy system site.
Would you tell us the, the section that you're on? I can't see the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So this is subsection H of the, uh, application requirements. So under C1, where it lists those applications, on my document, page 6. Actually, it'd be on page 7, that section part, starts on page 6 and then goes to page 7. Right under the fire suppression system requirement in the application.
Okay.
Okay, and then a second reference, I'm jumping down, and I'll have to back up to see what section I'm in. This is in the substantive requirements for the operation, so this is... Um, under the site plan requirements. Get back to it now. On my document, it's page 15. Emergency action plan and training. Before the utility solar energy facility is operational, the operator shall provide the necessary training, equipment, or agreement specified in the application to township or other emergency personnel. And then the third reference, oh, sorry, it's actually the same section, so it is only two references. So I don't know that it provides for annual ongoing training, but it provides for a plan for the training, um, and then perfection, what the training will be as part of the application, and then actually giving that training before it's operational.
You good with that?
I'm good with that, but I would also, like, if this is, if it turns out to be a 2030-year project, do we want annual training for the local firemen and women, so that they are up to date on what's going on?
Would we do that in this phase, or should we do it in the planning?
We can do it in this place, in this, in this space.
At certain point, isn't that the fire departments, they're gonna train their own people, I mean, at all time. I mean, even firefighters are hired, they're gonna have to train them, and that'll be part of their training at that.
Well, we wanna make sure that the solar operator is responsible for all that, to the email of all that training.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that the normal training on firefighters encompasses solar fires, because I think it was brought up by the public that they, they may or may not do that. So I think to, to your point, it might be something that you wanna add.
It should be a specific training that's done, and then it should be paid for by the solar operator.
And I think that's what this currently provides.
Right.
And the question is, should it more specifically require that training to be annually, biannually, whatever the township would like to see?
And she's nailing it down a little bit more succinctly with an annual, so is that, so is that what you're looking for?
I would say at a minimum, biannually, but I would almost like to see it annually, only because if there are changes...
How about annual refresher training?
I would do that.
Yeah. So we could say, um, going back first to the application requirements, where it requires that written description, we can say the training must include, at a minimum, an annual training program or annual training session.
Refresher, refresher course, update.
Annual training, uh... How about just annual, uh, the training plan?
Jordan, can we, uh, ask a question out of your route? You probably know it more than anybody here. What's your opinion on that? I was gonna ask you.
Kayla's 100% right. Every year, they should be trained on the solar facility, um, and all the working components of it, because there's new members each year, and it says regular refresher for the current members too, so. Annual refresher training at the solar facility.
Refresher's not right if you're talking to new people.
Yeah, so what if the training plan must include at a minimum annual training for local firefighters and other local emergency personnel at the, uh...
Well, classify, classify new or pre-existing training for, you know, the refresher training for existing personnel and, uh, actual content training for the new people that come on board. Exactly how you would word that, I don't know.
Emergency response training.
There you go. Would it be specific to the solar issue?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
Emergency response training for local firefighters, uh, at the site of the utility.
Yeah, because it's not gonna be just firefighters, it's gonna be police officers are gonna be on site. You're gonna have fire, you're gonna have ambulances there in case someone gets injured, so there's other people that would be involved in it.
So I think that would then, um, so when they do that application, they have to describe the training they will provide, but at a minimum, it must include that annual emergency response training for local firefighters and other local emergency personnel at the site of the utility scale, scaled solar energy system.
Sounds fantastic. Is that good for you?
I am good with that, and I only had one other question that looked good on that subject. Uh, in decommissioning, it talked about removing all utility communication lines and so forth. But my question is, let's say we go through a decommission, and the property is turned back into its original state. What if the property owner wants to leave those communication cables? You know, because maybe it's beneficial to the owner. Why would we have these, uh, DTE or whoever is doing the solar project rip out those cables just for the owner to put them back in?
Sure, so I'm just looking for the right section to... I'm thinking this is the part...
I guess it depends on what you're gonna actually do with the end use after your decommission, because if you're gonna return it to agriculture, I think you'd want all that.
So the plan...
It's gonna depend on the end use after decommissioning.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. I think in their application, they should still have a plan for fully removing it, because that would be the, the typical default. So I don't think we wanna necessarily change the application part, uh, but let me jump down to...
It was more about leaving it open to the owner at the time of decommission. If the owner wanted to leave, let's say it's an internet line. Okay, we know internet is what it is out here. But if the owner then was able to leave that line in and use it afterward, why are we having it, the option to leave it there, not there, for that owner?
So were you looking, what kind of, what I have it up now, where it talks about if it's abandoned or otherwise non-operational for a period of six months, the property owner, landowner, or operator owner by the township, and shall remove the system within six months? Requires demo permit, full restoration of the site. Is that the section you're thinking might need a qualifier?
No, it was, it was down toward the end, I'll re-read it here.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
One of the other things that I had, um, caution about was, if a site does get, um, installed, a lot of times the grading is gonna be better than what it was before. And I don't know if you necessarily wanna put it back to the original state. I mean, I can, I understand removing everything, but a lot of times you're gonna have, it's gonna drain actually more, it'll drain properly with a graded site. And I don't necessarily think that, again, they have to put it back to the natural state, because it is, once everything's removed, it will be back into a, you know, another natural state, just without the solar on it.
So, yes, I think that parts here, I'm on page 15. I think this is kind of to your point. The ground shall be restored to its original topography within 365 days of abandonment or decommissioning. An extension may be granted if a good faith effort has been demonstrated, and any delay is not the result of action, your action of the operator. I'm just seeing if there's anything here that sort of addresses that. Because I think the point is, you certainly don't want them ripping it all up and leaving it.
Right, and it's, but you don't, so original topography could be like if you had a, you know, big swale, or not even a swale, you would, that would probably not be taken out, but, uh, just some, right, like a rolling, and it's all now has been drained, so like drained to a pond that they had to put in. I don't think you have to go back to the rolling part, but we want everything taken out, but then leveled, you know, smoothed back out or whatever.
Do you want it something where it says that unless the, you know, planning commission after notice in a public hearing grants an exception to this requirement?
Yeah, that would be a great way to state it.
And that would be the same with your, and everything with the wires.
Yeah, because that could probably cover both of them.
Yeah, we're gonna come back to Kayla on that one. Let me pop this in here and review that.
Right.
Unless the planning commission approves an exception after notice to property owners within 300 feet and a public hearing.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was looking at, like, if there was access roads, if there's drainage there, if there's communication lines, if the owner of the actual property wants to leave those in and use it to their benefit.
So rather than putting this language here, I wonder if we want a more general provision that says the planning commission can improve a deviation from these decommissioning requirements following notice in a public hearing?
In the same section?
In that section, but there, that way, if they, if they needed to do something that didn't strictly fit within this, um...
But wouldn't it be after the decommissioning part? So we're talking, uh, application issues, but then you're talking now after it's over with, and then we're talking about after this is all done 20 years from now, if it, if it was to happen. So how do you predict? And how do you even know what the site conditions are gonna be, what the topography's gonna be, what the stripping of the topsoil's gonna be?
Nope.
I mean, there's too many caveats to go down.
I'm not suggesting that it be done at the application stage at all.
Okay.
I'm talking about when they're at the decommissioning. Their plan needs to plan to do all of these things, to remove everything, to bring it back into topography. If in 10 years, they say, "Look, we can put it back the way it was, but it was, you know, hilly, and, you know, and now it's all nice and flat."
Right.
The property owner would like to keep it flat. Will you, planning commission, again, 10 years down the road or whenever, 20, 30, 40, will you grant us an exception from that rule so that we can leave it flat?
The application process to amend the, the original agreement, basically.
Yeah, effectively, it would sort of be a deviation from this, that you would approve at the time, again, with notice in a public hearing at that time, not as part of the application process.
Okay.
So, just gotta be, where to pop that in here? So this section is the decommissioning or abandonment, so I think we probably wanna drop it at the end of those requirements. So I'm on page, top of page 16 on mine, it'd be new paragraph I. And realize, all this is, of course, still subject to change, working document, but we can say, "The planning commission may, um..." No, that's a deviation. I don't wanna say variance, because that's a very specific ZVA term, and I don't wanna create any confusion.
Amend, amend?
Yeah. Well, it's not even a, necessarily an amendment, because you're allowing them to do something that's not technically...
My rank variations.
Yeah, may grant, yeah. May, oh, oops. I'm gonna say, "May allow deviations from the above decommissioning requirements following notice to property owners within 300 feet of the property and a public hearing."
At the time of decommissioning?
Yep. After that would say, "Following notice and a public hearing." At the, yeah, I would say at... At the time of decommissioning, the planning commission may allow deviations from the above decommissioning requirements following notice in a public hearing in accordance with Section 103 of the Zoning and Labeling Act, which is your notice to property owners within 300 feet published in the paper.
Thank you.
Yeah? And I think after we go through any text, you know, we obviously have to deal with the big issue of where the overlay district is, but I thought it made sense to go through any text issues first.
Kayla, did you wanna talk about section two?
I have not read that.
But we're gonna go down through it and we'll stop, um, quickly.
Real quick, and she just wanted to, we, we go back, Shawn, but she wanted to address this.
Yeah, the overlay district, where it talks about open space community, what is that specifically referring to? I'm gonna start there.
Is it, is that an existing overlay district already have?
We have open space communities, but does that grant the solar use or not?
No, I think this was just showing where the solar energy is gonna go in that section. It's just showing the sequence of where that intext appears. It's not adding or changing the open space at all.
Okay, so it's not open space within a community or subdivision? It's specifically an overlay that's already existing?
This, right, so that, all that was doing there, as I understand it, was you have existing overlay, I don't know if you have more than one, or if that's your only overlay? Is that your only current overlay?
No, there's more than one.
Okay.
But, but the overlay, it should be overlay district list or something like that. It shouldn't be, the way it's worded.
Yeah, let me pull up your actual zoning ordinance real quick. Loading, loading, loading. Almost there. There we go. Okay. So this is the issue, I think, let me flip back to make sure. It's okay, so we're amending section 6.01. And if you look at how 6.01 is set up now, it shows you have zoning districts, and then it currently only has one overlay district. So all we've done is we're amending that section, so we've used the current language, but we changed this part, because right here, it said Conway Township has established the following overlay district applicable to the AR agricultural residential district and the R residential district. So that language is out, and it just says Conway Township has established the following overlay districts. The one you already had, open space at Article 12, and now your new solar energy system at Article 19.
It's just spelling out the two districts as well?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
It does not modify your open space, nor does it speak to where this overlay is allowed.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Shawn, did you wanna start at the beginning and go?
I, I believe, I mean, I would think everybody wanted, would want to. This didn't get out till late, so.
Happy to do that.
Anybody?
Yes, yes. All right.
Yes.
It didn't come out till noon today, right? Something like that.
Yeah, I think that's about right, late, late morning.
I mean, we could hit it, shoot, move through it fast, I'm sure, so.
Pictures of the overlay didn't come around until, you know, 3:00 or 4:00.
It was like 1:00. It was like 1:00.
I may have bet I was walking grass. I didn't get to 1:00.
Uh, you wanna go through the text before the overlay map, correct?
Yes, I would like to do that, yeah.
Yeah, we wanna keep the people waiting.
Okay.
They're so excited for that, so.
Um, all right, well, I don't know, um, this is not a red line comparison of the prior version, so I'm just gonna go through it as it is in this clean version. Do you want me to read it out word for word, the entire thing, or do you want me to summarize it?
Do you read as well as you type?
I can read, I can read what pretty well.
Just whatever's fastest.
All right, well, I'm not sure that the purpose and findings has changed much, right? Focuses on the demonstrated need for, um, for this land use in the community while seeking to preserve the township's rural culture, uh, character and agricultural heritage. Has certain findings. I'm thinking I can probably go through this part pretty quickly.
Okay.
So those are the findings, and what we really care about, we get into the meat. Um, 1902 is where we will describe the boundaries of the overlay district. That's not in this draft yet, because we need to discuss it tonight. 1903 says there's no uses permitted by right in that overlay district, so any, um, utility-scale, uh, solar energy system needs a special land use permit. That does not take away anything that is permitted by right in the underlying zoning district. So if you overlay the solar district above an ag district, then obviously, all the uses permitted by right, ag are still permitted by right. It's just the solar use that would require the special use permit. Um, then, amends 1904, which lists special land uses to provide that utility-scale solar energy systems require a special land use permit. We just talked about this section, uh, 6.1 amendment, just to add solar energy system as one of your overlay districts. It does not amend anything with the open space community overlay district.
What does SF stand for?
Uh, I think it's solar farm. And then we added in some definitions that are pretty standard in solar ordinances to define what they are. If anybody wants me to stop or slow down at a certain place, I'm just trying to get to the meat of the regulations.
Real quick, back to the overlay district.
Yeah.
It says SF, can you just change that to SES?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right, definitions. All right, and then it repeals, uh, your existing section 6.26 and adds new section 6.26, solar energy systems. Uh, so you previously had solar energy collectors, that's going out, the new is coming in. And this is where we get into the heart of the regulations. Um, all solar energy systems have to comply with the ordinance in all county, state, and federal regulations and safety requirements, including building codes and applicable industry standards, including those of the American National Standards Institute, Underwriter Laboratory, National Electrical Code, National Fire Protection Association, and most current Michigan Uniform Building Code adopted by the enforcing agencies. If an applicant, operator, or landowner of a solar energy system fails to comply with this ordinance, the township, in addition to any other remedy under the ordinance, may revoke any approvals after giving the applicant notice and an opportunity to be heard. So typically, and yours as well, some ordinance already has some remedies built in. That might be a civil infraction or a fine. We wanted to make it very clear that this is a special land use, it's a privilege, and if you don't follow the ordinance or the law, then that privilege can be revoked. Law requires that we give notice and an opportunity to be heard before revoking it, because once it's constructed, it is a property interest. So we have to have, for due process reasons, notice and an opportunity to be heard before we could take that away. Additionally, the township may pursue any legal or equitable action to evade a violation and recover any amount of costs, including the township's actual attorney fees and costs. So if we have to take somebody to court to enforce it, and we win, then they will have to pay the township's attorney fees. The next section is on private solar energy systems, uh, which if we go back up to the definitions up here, uh, private is used exclusively... private is used exclusively for private purposes and not used for any commercial resale of any energy, except for the sale of surplus electrical energy back to the electrical grid. So primarily, it's just providing energy onsite, so it's a much smaller systems. These are approved by administrative review, meaning they don't go through the planning commission's special land use approval process. An applicant who wants a private solar energy system at their home submits an application to your zoning administrator on a form approved by the township board. There are application requirements for that. And then the zoning administrator may approve that, approve with conditions, or deny that. And if someone is unhappy with that decision, then it may be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. If you are doing a single solar panel with a total area of less than eight feet, or you are repairing or replacing existing private solar energy equipment, then you don't even need to get the administrative review. There are also VIBPs, which we go back to our definitions up here. Those are the building integrated photovoltaics. I'm a good reader except for that word, I always stumbled on it. Which is a small private solar energy system that is integrated into the structure of a building like solar roof tiles and solar shingles. So for those, they are permitted as accessory uses in all zoning districts, so they're not allowed just in the overlay. Subject again to that administrative approval above, and they need a building permit. For roof or building mounted private solar energy systems, also permitted in all zoning districts as an accessory use with administrative approval. And they have some extra safety requirements. They've got to be installed and used in accordance with manufacturer instructions. They need to comply with the construction code, electric code, building code, electric code. Building permit is required. Maximum height, it cannot extend more than five feet beyond the peak of the roof or exceed the maximum building limitation for the zoning district in which it's located. No part of the system mounted on a roof is to project beyond the eaves of the, not the roof, how about the roof? Alright. If the solar energy system is mounted on a building in an area other than the roof, no part of the solar energy system is permitted to extend beyond the wall on which it is mounted. A solar energy system mounted on a building wall may not face an adjacent public right of way. Must be neutral in color and substantially non-reflective of light. If it's been abandoned for six months, it has to be removed within three months of the date of abandonment. Non-conforming buildings, a roof or building mounted private solar energy system installed on a non-conforming building or structure is not considered an expansion of the, I should say, non-conformity, but it shall meet all height and placement requirements of the zoning district and this section. Meaning if you have a non-conforming building, you're typically not allowed to do anything to increase that non-conformity. This is saying just putting on a private solar system does not increase the non-conformity, but you can't violate the height or other locational requirements of that zoning district. And the zoning administrator may inspect a private solar energy system for compliance with reasonable notice. For the requirements for ground-mounted private solar energy system, also permitted in all zoning districts as an accessory use, subject to administrative approval from your zoning administrator, and additional requirements, very similar. Safety, follow the rules. Building permit required. Maximum height shall not exceed the maximum building height for adjacent accessory buildings and shall not exceed 16 feet above the ground when oriented at maximum tilt. Must be located in the rear yard or side yard and meet the setback requirements. Any power lines, transmission, power transmission or other lines wired to conduits from the ground-mounted private solar energy system to a building or structure that's powering must be underground. If you have batteries as part of it, they have to be in a secure container or enclosure. And for these ground-mounted systems, they have to be screened, so you have to have green belt screening around both the system and any equipment to obscure it to the extent possible for many adjacent residences. That must consist of shrubbery trees and other non-invasive plant species that provide a visual screen. Or instead of a green belt, you can have a decorative fence that is at least 50% opaque, meeting the township's fence ordinance if approved by the planning commission. And your ground-mounted private system cannot exceed 50% of the square footage of the principal building on the property. If it's two acres or less inside, see your property that is, then a ground-mounted private solar energy system is not considered an accessory building or structure for purposes of 6.06. Must be neutral color, substantially non-reflective of light. If it's abandoned, must be, must notify the township and remove the system within three months. Same issue with non-conformity, it doesn't increase the non-conformity, that also should say, non-conformity. And the zoning administrator may inspect upon reasonable notice. Okay, now to the main event, the utility scale solar energy systems. These are permitted by special land use in the solar energy system overlay district. Require both a special land use permit and site plan approval and are subject to the following requirements. The first we have are the application requirements. These are in addition to the application requirements that are already in Article 13 for all special land use permits for any kind of special land use in the township. First, there's going to be an application fee. That'll be set by the township board in either a resolution or a fee schedule. Then there will be a deposit for an escrow account in an amount set by resolution or fee schedule approved by the township board. The escrow account is used to cover all costs and expenses associated with the special land use review and/or approval process. Those costs can include, but are not limited to, review fees of the township attorney, township planner, and township engineer, as well as any reports or studies which the township anticipates will be required during the review and/or approval process for the application. At any point during the review process, the township may require that the applicant place additional monies into escrow with the township if the existing escrow funds on account with the township will be insufficient in the determination of the township to cover any remaining costs or expenses with the review or approval process. If additional funds are required by the township to be placed in escrow and the applicant refuses to do so within 14 days after receiving notice, the township will cease the zoning review and/or approval process until and unless the applicant makes the required escrow deposit. Any escrow amounts in excess of actual cost will be returned to the applicant and itemized billing of all expenses will be provided to the applicant upon request. So basically, what that means is that the township is going to have costs in reviewing these applications. They are highly technical applications. They will likely require legal review, engineering review, plan a review. But you as taxpayers will not bear the brunt of that cost. The applicant will have to give money in the form of an escrow payment to cover those and the township will then use that money to pay those professionals and for that review. If there's not enough money, then the township goes back to the applicant and says, you didn't give us enough, you need to give us more. They have two weeks to do that or else the township stops reviewing anything. We've done this in other communities with, with wind and with solar. And in practice, it works pretty well and, you know, we don't run into an issue. These are big developments with a lot of money at issue and putting money in escrow is frankly part of doing business. So that's what that provision allows for. A list of all parcel numbers that will be used by the utility scale solar energy system, documentation establishing ownership of each parcel, and any and all lease or option agreements, easements or purchase agreements for the subject parcels, together with any attachments to such agreements or easements. I don't know which properties are included in this and who owns them and if they're subject to leases or things like that. An operations agreement setting forth the operation parameters, the name and contact information of the certified operator, the applicant's inspection protocol, emergency procedures, and general safety documentation. And that will get much more detailed as we go through. Federal employer identification number for the current owner-operator is required at the time of the application. A written emergency response plan detailing the applicant's plan for responding to emergencies, including fire emergencies, and analyzing whether adequate resources exist to respond to fires and other emergencies. If adequate resources do not exist, the applicant shall identify his plan for providing those resources. The emergency plan shall include identification of potential hazards to adjacent properties, public roadways, and to the community in general that may be created, as well as plans for immediate cleanup, long-term monitoring, and continued mitigation efforts following an emergency. So it's not enough for the applicant to just say, if there's a fire, we'll call the fire department. They need to analyze whether the existing fire response capacity is enough. And if it's not, they need to fund something better. They have to provide a plan for how they are going to have sufficient emergency response. That may be them having a private emergency response team that they have on standby or something else, but they do have to provide you with that analysis. A written description of the fire suppression system that will be installed, which shall identify the manufacturer of the fire suppression system and generally describes its operations and capacity to extinguish fires. I'm sure you talked about that with Mike, that there are companies that manufacture those now. A written description of specialized training and/or equipment necessary for handling fires and/or other emergencies at the utility scale solar energy system site. The training plan must include at a minimum annual emergency response training for local firefighters and other local emergency personnel at the site of the utility scale solar energy system. A complete set of photographs, video, and topography map of the entire participating property prior to construction. And that's helpful when we get to that decommissioning stage. What was the original condition? That will be relevant to make sure they comply with it. Or if they do request a deviation, they can say, hey, here's the mess it was before, you know, and here's what we want it to look like. Not suggesting that any of those properties is a mess, you know, topography wise.
Sure.
A copy of any power purchase agreement or other written agreement that the applicant has with an electric utility. Or the, or any agreement or approval for interconnection between the proposed utility scale solar energy system and an electric utility or transmission company. A written plan conforming to the requirements of this ordinance for maintaining the subject property, including a plan for maintaining and inspecting drain tiles and addressing stormwater management. A decommissioning and land reclamation plan describing the actions to be taken following the abandonment or discontinuation of the utility scale solar energy system, including evidence of proposed commitments with property owners to ensure proper final reclamation, repairs to roads, and other steps necessary to fully remove the utility scale solar energy system and restore the subject parcels to as near as possible to the condition the subject parcels were in prior to being used in the utility scale solar energy system. Or we still want that as their plan and then the part for deviations is later in the ordinance. Financial security, that meets the requirements of this ordinance. A plan for resolving complaints regarding, but not limited to, noise, glare, maintenance, and drainage from the public or other property owners concerning the construction and operation of the utility scale solar energy system. And that's written so that you don't have to own the adjacent property to complain. That is open to complaints from the public. Identification of and a plan for managing any hazardous waste. A transportation plan for construction and operation phases, including any applicable agreements with the Livingston County Road Commission and Michigan Department of Transportation. An attestation that the applicant and owner of the subject property will identify and hold the township and its officials elected or appointed harmless from any costs or liability arising from the approval, installation, construction, maintenance, use, repair, or removal of the utility scale solar energy system. Meaning if someone puts in a utility solar energy system and you guys get sued, the developer has to provide, pay for the defense and then indemnity value, which means pay any damages if any damages are awarded. A copy of the name.
Question, question.
Yep.
That's during the construction process, but what about after it's in operation?
No, that's not just for, that's for all of, for anything at any time, that attestation is, so they'll sign an indemnification and hold harmless agreement.
We have a different owner, we change ownership. Does that follow?
That's a good question, so let me make a note to look at how that's dealt with later in the ordinance.
Okay.
You certainly would still be able to go after the original applicant and the original owner, so if they don't assign that liability later.
If they're not here or they're bankrupt, what do you do?
Yep, let me make a note to look at that. Okay. We'll come back to that. I want to make sure it's not covered later in this, before we edit it.
Yep, don't worry.
A copy of the manufacturer's directions, instruction manual, and specification sheet, including any unredacted safety manuals and material safety data sheets for installing, maintaining, and using the utility scale solar energy system. A ground cover vegetation establishment and management plan that complies with the ordinance. Proof of environmental compliance, including compliance with these following parts of NARA and any other applicable laws and rules in force at the time the application is considered by the township. Any additional information or documentation requested by the planning commission, township board, or other township representative. Insurance. Proof of the applicant, owner, operator, and landowner's public liability insurance shall be provided at the time of application. If the applicant is approved, proof of insurance shall be provided to the township annually thereafter. The policy shall provide for bodily injury and property damage and shall name Conway Township and each participating property owner as an additional insurer. The applicant shall insure for liability for the utility scale solar system until removed for at least $25 million per occurrence to protect the applicant, township, and participating property owner. Proof of a current policy is required annually and shall be provided each year to the township prior to the anniversary date of the special land use permit. Compliance with the Michigan Uniform Building Code and National Electric Safety Code. Construction of a utility solar energy facility shall comply with the most current version of the Michigan Uniform Building Code and National Electrical Code adopted by the enforcing agencies as a condition of any special land use permit under this section. And a conceptual plan, a graphical computer-generated depiction of how the utility scale solar energy system will appear from all directions. Site plan application requirements, so those were the special use permit application requirements. Now, in addition to all of the site plan application requirements that every site plan applicant has to provide, the applicant also must provide a detailed application, site plan drafted, add an ED there, drafted to a scale of one inch equals 200 feet with the following. Location of all proposed structures, panels, equipment, transformers, and substations. Location of all existing structures or dwellings on the parcel. And location of all existing structures, dwellings on adjacent, non-participating property within 1,000 feet of the property lines of any participating properties. Depiction of all setbacks, property lines, fences, signs, green belts, screening, drain tiles, easements, flood drains, bodies of water, proposed access routes, and road rights of way. Indication of how and where the system will be connected to the power grid. Plan for any land clearing and grading required for the installation and operation of the system. Plan for ground cover establishment and management. Anticipated construction schedule and completion date. As a condition of any special land use or site plan approval, hours of construction shall be limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with no construction on Saturday, Sunday, or any federally recognized holiday. Sound modeling study, including sound isolines extending from the sound sources to the property lines. Any additional studies requested by the planning commission, including but not limited to the following. A visual impact assessment, an environmental analysis, a stormwater study, a glare study, and an optional conceptual layout plan. Approvals from other agencies. Final site plan approval may be granted only after the applicant receives all required federal, state, and local approvals, including any applicable approval by the state historic preservation office. Applicant shall provide copies of all review letters, final approved plans, and reports issued by any other governing agencies to the township. The site plan must show the existing topographical grades and conditions of all participating property at the time of application.
Question.
Yes.
Could we, could we add two-foot intervals on the topographical grades?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the site plan must show the existing topical, topographical grades.
In two-foot intervals.
In two-foot intervals, yep. A baseline soil test, including the patient exchange capacity, shall be provided to the township prior to any construction. A written description of how the applicant will address dust control during construction. Such plan shall at a minimum consist of water applications at least three times per day unless it is rained in the preceding three hours of the planned application. Water usage and cleaning. The applicant shall detail the methodology plan for cleaning the solar panels, frequency, and listing of any and all detergents. So I'm going to bop that word, surf, see, that's what I could read.
Surfactant.
Thank you, surfactants, and chemical sufficiency, I was an English major. Chemical sufficiency used for each such cleaning and sources of water used to facilitate panel restoration and maintenance. Application items as substantive requirements. The information, plans, documents, and other items identified as application requirements in this ordinance, including the site plan, is in this ordinance, including the site plan and solar land use permit, are substantive requirements for maintaining approval for utility scale solar energy system. The planning commission is to review the sufficiency of the application materials. If the planning commission determines that the substance of any application item is insufficient to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, the planning commission shall deny approval on that basis. And that basically is to protect against kind of a checkbox approach, where you're like, oh, well, they submitted something they called an environmental analysis, you know, it's one page that somebody typed on Google Docs right before the meeting, but technically, that doesn't fly, right? You've got to look, you're looking at the substantive quality of the submission, and that is part of the substance of the application. So it's giving you that duty and also that authority to review the sufficiency of those System and location requirements. Utility scale solar energy systems are to be located only in the solar energy system overlay district. Utility scale systems shall be ground mounted. Utility scale systems, including all solar panels, structures, equipment, and fencing, you'll see flames here, and I understand that's what was left after the last meeting, shall be set back blank feet from all non-participating property lines and blank feet from all other lot lines and public road rights of way, measured from the nearest boundary of the public right of way. And I'll pause here to say, it might make sense to talk about the setbacks after you talk about the boundaries of the overlay district in the scope of that.
I agree.
If a single utility scale system is located on more than one lot, or if you have adjacent parcels owned by the same owner, then those lot line setbacks don't apply to the lots shared by those lots. Utility scale systems shall be set back at least 150 feet from the edge of any wetland, shoreline, or drainage easement. Planning commission may increase that setback requirement if necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Repairing buffers and filter strips where needed. Denitrifying bioreactors may be required, and if required, must be installed and maintained to the specifications required by USDA and FSA. That's intended to reduce or eliminate sediment and nutrient loading of drainage ditches, streams, rivers, lakes, and other nearby waterways. If required, no structures may be placed within the buffer or filter strip areas. Depending upon the topography, soil, and other factors, buffer or filter strips will generally be between 33 feet and 164 feet wide on both sides of the ditches, streams, and other waterways. The height of the system and any mounts, buildings, accessory structures, and related equipment shall not exceed 16 feet when oriented at maximum tilt. The planning commission may allow a height of up to 20 feet if the applicant establishes that the lot is used for grazing by farm animals in a manner that requires increasing the height limit. Lightning rods may exceed 16 feet in height, but they shall be limited to the height necessary to protect the system from lightning. PV array components, those must be approved by the Institute of Electrical and Engineering Engineers, Solar Rating and Certification Corporation, Electronic Testing Laboratories, or other similar certification organizations acceptable to the township. All required county, state, and federal permits shall be obtained before the system begins operating. Screening. Green belt screening is required around the system and around any equipment to obscure to the greatest extent possible the system on all sides and any open views from non-participating property. Screening shall be installed to obscure the facility and shall, I don't know why it says facility there, we can change that system. There's a couple of those, we'll patch those. And shall contain two rows of staggered evergreen trees planted not less than 12 feet apart, trunk to trunk, and two rows shall be no greater than 10 feet apart. Any substitution shall be approved in advance by the planning commission. No species of, help me out here.
Arboriculturists.
Shall be permitted. Planting shall be at least eight feet tall at the time of planting, measured from the top of the root ball to the base of the leader, not including the height of the leader, and shall reach a height of 10 feet within three growing seasons. The trees may be trimmed, but shall maintain a height of at least 18 feet, 18 feet. Evergreen trees shall be Norway spruce. Good arboricultural techniques shall be followed with respect to vegetation, including but not limited to proper pruning, fertilizing, and mulching, so that vegetation will reach maturity as soon as practical and will have maximum density and foliage. Deter disease vegetation shall be removed and shall be replanted in a manner consistent with this section at the next appropriate planting time. Each deter disease vegetation shall be completely replaced at 50% as determined by the zoning administrator. Annual review by a professional arborist paid by the owner, paid for by the owner or operator shall be performed to determine any plant vegetation replacement necessary for any compliance with the ordinance.
Can I ask a question, or no? Are we not low enough?
That's it.
Thanks, Mike.
If it doesn't reach the 10 feet within the three growing seasons, what are they going to do? If any of theirs-
If it's not dead beyond 50%, they can't do it.
Well, it states if it doesn't grow within 10 feet within three growing seasons, then what happens?
You're going to send Gary out there with the measuring stick.
We know what this language in another township around here, right? And you could say that it's reasonably expected to reach a height of 10 feet, and that might be an appropriate revision. So, okay, all right.
Quick question.
Can I just finish here? Measured from the top of the root ball to the base of the leader, and reasonably expected to reach.
Do you mean to say base of the leader or top of the-
I said base. I meant to say whatever it says here. Sorry.
You did the top.
Okay.
Because that's the actual top of the tree.
But then it says not including the height of the leader, I think it was supposed to be base.
Yeah, it's base.
Yeah. All right.
Where you said, yeah. Yes, there was one thing that, you know, we're talking about all this vegetation and stuff, one thing I thought of, pesticides, insecticides, all of that kind of stuff that could be used to control any pests, insects, weeds on site from around the solar panels. Should it be written in there, either A, not be able to be used, or informed to the township in case there is some type of contamination on site based on those?
So I guess, how much of that would fall within good arboricultural techniques? Is that, I know somebody in the room knows it way better than I do, does that deal at all with pesticide use?
Well, would that fall into the MSDS too?
Yeah, it might.
No, it would, it would fall under good arboricultural practices.
Right, but what I think is a good arboricultural technique may not be the same as somebody else, is what I'm saying, like, I spray my house for bugs because ants are the lure at my house and they come in and destroy everything. So for me, it's important to spray for ants, but for a site like this, I don't know. That's where I'm asking, should we as a board be informed of what they're using, if they're using?
Would they have to inform us, do they have to have a list on the MSDS sheets that they have on site, right?
Right, to the extent required by that.
Would that be for the actual unit itself, just the solar panels, the buildings? Or would that fall into that description right there, is whether or not it's going to be part of-
Yeah, I think that's more-
What they're spraying on the trees?
I think that's more for the system itself.
Okay. Because we're outside the fence, not inside the fence.
Yeah.
Right.
George Lee, are they still called MSDS? They haven't really changed it.
It's just an abbreviation for material safety data sheet.
So I thought they changed that up a few years ago.
Same.
Not, why not?
It's kind of the commission's pleasure on whether you want to put anything more specific about pesticide use.
I don't have any.
I would leave it up to the arborists.
They have strict guidelines if they had to apply that stuff, and most of those are licensed applicators that do it. So then that would jeopardize their licenses if they're, you know, violating whatever they're applying. So, I'm not saying Killa doesn't have a point, but how are you going to get Gary out there to chase them down? So, when they're not doing it.
Well, that's something they're afraid of.
Enforcability is where I have a problem.
Well, if you wanted to grow, I assume you don't want to ban pesticides. Thank you for that question, Al. Utility scale systems also shall comply with the landscaping standards in section 6.16 of the zoning ordinance. Front side and rear yard screening is required if the system is adjacent to a non-participating property. Appearance. The exterior surface of the system shall be generally neutral in color and substantially nonreflective of light. Lighting. Lighting of the system is limited to the minimum light necessary for safe operation. Illumination from any lighting shall not extend beyond the perimeter of the participating property. The system shall not produce any glare that is visible to neighboring lots or to persons traveling on public or private roads. Flashing or intermittent lights are prohibited. Security fencing. Security fencing may be required by the planning commission to be installed around all electrical equipment related to the system, including any transformers. Fencing shall be at least seven feet tall and composed, be composed of, oop, there's a word missing, and be composed, that's the reason, read it out loud, woven agricultural wire. Barbed and razor wire is prohibited. A containment system shall surround any transformers in case of a hazardous waste or oil spill. Appropriate warning signs shall be posted at safe intervals at the entrance and around the perimeter of the utility scale solar energy system. Gate posts and corner posts shall have a concrete foundation. Gates shall be the same height and constructed of the same material as the fencing. Access, such as knockbox, shall be provided for emergency responders.
I have a question for the signage.
Yes.
Should we put so many feet in there? So that no matter what side of the facility you're on, you have something you can call it a hundred number and say, hey, you know, you've got a hole in your fence and people have been sneaking in there or whatever. Should it be around the whole facility at 100-foot intervals?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's within your discretion if you wanted to do that.
So is that something we do here, or would be that the planning, the planning statement?
That's a good question, I mean, what counts as safe intervals may be case by case, so it may be difficult to have a one-size-fits-all rule.
Or gates.
For that, yeah.
Just, you gotta have the gates, or the small signings got the formula around there, so you can contact the facility to tell them they've got problems in their fence.
I think that'd be part of, ultimately, part of your site plan review, in terms of that.
So I didn't know if it should be in here or in the site plan review.
No, it's a good question, it's a good question. The township may allow or require a fence designed to allow for the passage of wildlife upon finding that adequate access control and visual screening will be preserved. Security fencing is subject to setback requirements. The security fence shall be locked, and a self-locking device shall be used. Lock boxes and keys, maybe electronics such as keypad, oh, authentic, I got a typo here. Maybe, okay, lock boxes and keys, maybe electronics such as keypad, I forget, what on here? If the passcode should be, maybe electronics such as keypad.
Making the doors open by a computer.
Yeah, it's just not, something went awry in the reformatting there.
Did we lose a sentence there?
I'm not sure. Let me look at my transcript. Yeah, it's definitely, we definitely lost some words there. I think it was supposed to be opener.
Opener, not open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can clean up that kind of thing. If the passcode is provided to the township and central dispatcher 911 service, shall be provided at locked entrances for emergency personnel access. Electric fencing is not permitted. A safety plan shall be in place and updated regularly with the local fire department having jurisdiction over the system. Noise. All sound measurements are to be instantaneous and shall not be averaged. The noise generated by system shall not exceed the following limits. 40 dba Lmax as measured at the property line between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. 35 dba Lmax as measured at the property line between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. The operator of the system shall annually provide for a sound analysis or modeling conducted by an auditory expert chosen by the township at the expense of the applicant. Underground transmission. All power transmission, communications, or other lines, wires, or conduits from utilities- There's a dash there, there we go. From a utility at scale solar energy system to any building or other structure shall be located underground at a depth that complies with current national electrical code standards, except for power switch yards or the area within a substation. Drain tile inspections. The system shall be maintained in working condition at all times while in operation. The applicant or operator shall identify and inspect all drain tiles at least once every two years by means of a robotic camera, with the first inspection occurring post-construction but before the utility scale solar energy system is in operation. The applicant or operator shall submit proof of the inspection to the township. The owner or operator shall repair any damage or failure of the drain tile within 60 days after discovery and submit proof of the repair to the township. The township is entitled, but not required, to have a representative present at each inspection or to conduct an independent inspection. Fire suppression. The system shall include a fire suppression system that is specifically designed to immediately suppress and extinguish fires in any part of the system, including the panels, electrical equipment, and transformers. The applicant or operator shall provide documentation establishing the effectiveness of the fire suppression system and the results of a third-party independent inspection of the fire suppression system. Battery storage. Commercial grid storage batteries or capacitor banks storing or returning supplemental power to the grid are not permitted in the district. Use of batteries in commercial applications is only permitted as emergency backup for safety lighting and related computer infrastructures. Another setback that we have blank for now, inverter shall be set back blank from lot lines and non-participating lots, and blank for the lot lines participating lots.
Wasn't there a statement way earlier about batteries that they're used that even be protected somehow? I think that was surprise.
I think that was private.
I wasn't.
Let me double check, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I started with private. Stray voltage assessment. No stray voltage originating from a system may be detected on any participating or non-participating property. A preconstruction stray voltage test shall be conducted on all MVA RV registered livestock facilities located within a one-mile radius of the participating properties. The test shall be performed by an investigator approved by the township. A report of the test shall be provided to the owners of all property included in the study area. The applicant or landowner shall seek written permission from the property owners prior to conducting testing on such ordered property. Applicants' landowners, landowners shall not be required to perform testing on property where the owners have refused to grant permission to conduct the testing. The owner of any participating property included in the list of project parcels shall not refuse the stray voltage testing if they have an MVA RV registered livestock facility on the participating property. Ground cover. The lot on which the system is located shall be covered with vegetation until decommissioning. To meet this requirement, the lot shall include one or more of the following. Pollinator habitat. A site designed to have vegetation that will enhance pollinator populations, including a diversity of flowering plants and wildflowers, and means a score of 76 or more of the Michigan Pollinator Habitat planning scorecard for solar sites. Conservation cover. A site designed with practices to restore native plants, grasses, and quary with the aim of protecting specific species or providing specific ecosystem services, such as carbon sequestration or soil health. The site shall be designed in partnership with a conservation organization or approved by the Livingston Conservation District. Forage grazing. Sites that incorporate rotational livestock grazing and forage production as part of a vegetative maintenance plan. Adrenaltax. Sites that combine raising crops for food, fiber, or fuel, and generating electricity within the project area to maximize land use. Ground cover shall be planted within four months of project completion weather permitting. Invasive species and noxious weeds are not permitted and shall be removed in a timely manner. Drainage. Drainage on the site shall be maintained in a manner consistent with or improved upon existing natural drainage patterns. Any disturbance to drainage or water management practices shall be managed within the property and on site in order to not negatively impact surrounding properties as a result of the development. This shall be maintained for the duration of the operation and shall be, and shall be able to be returned to pre-existing conditions following decommissioning. Any existing drainage tiles that are identified on the property shall be shown on the as-built drawing submitted following construction. Prior to the start of construction, any existing drain tile shall be inspected by robotic camera and the imagery submitted to the township for baseline documentation on tile condition. Any damage shall be repaired and a report submitted to the landowner and township. While the facility is in operation, the owner, operator, or operator shall re-inspect the drain tiles every three years by robotic camera for any damage and shall repair any damage within 60 days of discovery. The owner or operator shall report the inspection along with any damage within 60 days of discovery. The owner, operator shall report the inspection along with any damage- The owner, operator shall report the inspection along with any damage and repair to the township within ninety days after each three-year deadline. The township preserves the right to have the building inspector or other agent present at the time of repair. Solar panels, solar panel support structures and/or foundations shall be constructed to preserve any drainage field tile or system. Access routes. Access drives are subject to the approval of the Livingston County Planning, oop, Livingston County, should that be the road commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I did see, right? Road commission. Access drives shall be adequately maintained for emergency vehicle use, including winter maintenance. Applicant owner, operator shall submit an as-built drawing with dimensions relative to property lines of all new structures, including inverters and buried cable both inside and outside fenced areas, upon completion and before any power supplied to the grid. The as-built drawing shall be a scale of one inch equals 200 feet. Signs. Signs are permitted but shall comply with Article 17. The lot shall include at least one sign identifying the owner and provide a 24-hour emergency contact telephone number. So the signs we were talking about at the safe intervals was just warning signs.
Warning signs.
It was not the contact signs, it was like warning.
Yeah, high voltage.
Yeah, exactly.
Whatever, I don't know, they actually consider high voltage or not, but.
Swole, swollen crossbones.
Back to nineteen really quick.
Yeah.
It actually should be the access, the like, the entrance drive, it's not the whole access route. It's just kind of the entrance to a, I don't know.
It's just the part in the public road right away.
Right, so I don't, we need to.
Okay.
It's really an entrance, it's not the drive.
Yeah.
I think that's what this means, because they access the property.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you're referring to the Livingston County Road Commission, they only have authority in the right of way. They wouldn't have anything, any authority outside the right of way.
Yeah.
Isn't that specifically talking about so the fire trucks can get in and out of the facility?
Safely.
Safely, because that's, that's a problem with land, and you can't even get a fire truck in there, so I think that's.
It could, but I don't think the language addresses what you're saying.
Well, I think it doesn't take out the, from this kind of road commission.
But we don't, the access routes aren't gonna probably have any.
Oh, access road.
Right.
Access routes within the facility.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
Not necessarily getting into it, but.
Yes, it's, it's, yeah, inside the facility, and they only have jurisdiction over the entrance or the.
Yeah, to say to the extent of the road commission's jurisdiction. That way, whatever's within their jurisdiction gets their approval.
Okay.
And then say.
I think the second sentence takes care of what Rob was talking about.
Yeah, all access drives and roads within the site shall be adequately maintained.
Yeah, for emergency devices.
Emergency action plan and training. Before the system, before the system is operational, the operator shall provide the necessary training, equipment, or agreements specified in the application to township or other emergency personnel. So that's where we added that stuff in the application, so that will carry over here. Then we get into our decommissioning and/or abandonment requirements. If the system is abandoned or otherwise non-operational for a period of six months, the property owner, landowner, or the operator shall notify the township and shall remove the system within six months after the date of abandonment. Removal requires receipt of a demolition permit and full restoration of the site in accordance with the provisions of this ordinance and to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. The site shall be filled and covered with topsoil and restored to a state compatible with the surrounding vegetation. The requirements of this subsection also apply to a system that is never fully completed or operational if construction has been halted for a period of six months. The decommissioning plan shall be written to provide security to the township for 125% of the cost to remove and dispose of all panels, removal of all wiring, footing, and pilings regardless of depth, and restoration of the land to its original condition. The value of decommissioning shall be determined by a third-party financial consultant or engineer selected by the township and paid for by the developer. The decommissioning security shall be paid in cash to the township. Once the value of decommissioning is determined, it shall be updated on a periodic basis of not less than every two years, and additional security shall be required based on the average inflation rate of the preceding two years.
I'm sorry, can you go back to A really quick? What's the difference between a developer and a landowner?
Yeah, as I've been reading this out loud, I think we do need to be consistent in how we refer to that, because there are a couple different ways we're doing it.
One or the other.
Yeah, so, and it, and so we need to, I'm gonna break that down as well, because it's hard to do as I go through. Because we do want to impose certain responsibilities, not just on the operator, but on the landowner as well, because if the developer goes belly up, then the landowner still has some obligations as well.
And that's how you, how do you follow that through as, as we transfer from different, one owner to another owner?
Right.
And one landowner to another landowner. How does all this carry on through?
And so that's with your other note that I still have, so once we get to the end of this, that's what I want to go back to first.
Okay.
All abandonment and decommissioning work shall be done once soil is dry. The ground shall be restored to its original topography within 365 days of abandonment or decommissioning. An extension may be granted if a good faith effort has been demonstrated and any delay is not the result of actions or inaction of the operator. If land balancing is required, all topsoil will be saved and spread evenly over balanced area according to the existing topography map provided at the time of application. An annual report shall be provided to the zoning administrator showing continuity of operation and shall notify the zoning administrator if use is to cease. Now, it's a little clunky. Use is ceased prior to decommissioning or abandonment. Continuing obligations. Failure to keep any required financial security in full force and effect at all times while a system exists or is in place shall constitute a material and significant violation of the special land use permit. That's, there we go, what's needed there? And this ordinance and will subject the, uh, system, applicant, owner, and operator jointly and severally to all remedies available to the township, including any enforcement actions, civil action, request for injunctive relief, and revocation of the special land use permit. The township shall have the right to seek injunctive relief to affect or complete decommissioning as well as the right to seek reimbursement from the applicant, applicant successor, or landowner for decommissioning costs in excess of the amount deposited in escrow and file a lien against any real property owned by applicant, applicant successor, or landowner or in which they have an interest for the money accessed, and to take all steps allowed by law to enforce said lien.
Question.
Yep.
Can we go back to A for sentence? I'm not clear on that. If a utilities solar, scale solar energy system is abandoned or otherwise non-operational for a period of six months, comma, the property owner, comma, landowner, or the operator shall notify the township and remove the system within six months after the date of abandonment. What is the date of abandonment and who determines?
Right, I'll jump up to your definitions to see if you have abandonment, because typically it would be at the end of that six months it's deemed abandoned. So it's not like they stop using it for a day and it's abandoned, right? It's gotta be abandoned for a period of time, you do not have abandoned separately combined. So the way that's written, there's six months, and then they have six months from that, so you're really looking at twelve months from when they stop using it, maximum.
So is that what we want? Do we want it to go sit for a year? Is that what we're basically saying, six months and six months?
Well, they have the six months to remove it.
To remove it, so, because that's, that process takes time.
Right.
And keep in mind, you have a cash, you know, you have cash sitting there that's 125% of the cost of decommissioning.
Plus, they can only do decommissioning when it's dry.
Correct.
So if it's rainy, if it's a rainy season, it may be two months. I just want to be clear what we got here, that's all.
Yeah, no, that's good. Um, and then we have the provision we added. At the time of decommissioning, the planning commission may allow deviations from the above decommissioning requirements following notice in a public hearing in accordance with Section 1 of the Design and Ablin Act. Complaint resolution. Uh, sorry, is the system? System shall provide a complaint resolution process as described below. The site shall have signs posted with contact information to collect complaints related to the, uh, system. A log shall be kept by the owner or operator of all complaints received and shall be available to township officials for review at the township's request, not at the.
Why do we interchange applicant?
We're gonna come, oh, I didn't mean to speak over you, but we are gonna come back and clear that up, although it's not going to be the landowner who has the complaints. If they're leasing the land for use by a commercial operator, it's gonna be the commercial operator who has the complaints. So we probably would not expect the, the landowner to keep a log there. So sometimes it is more appropriate, um, for it to exclude the landowner.
Does it, the landowner have a contractual agreement with the utility?
Yes, but that doesn't mean they possess all their records.
Okay.
In fact, they most certainly wouldn't, right?
So all complaints would filter through the utility company.
Correct.
And then they would keep a log of all.
Exactly.
If the utility company is bankrupted.
And going back to your one we're gonna come back to, I know, I love it, I'm not, I've not forgotten it. Uh, the operator or its agent shall respond, well, that's why you have a really big decommissioning bond, but adding cash. Uh, the operator or its agent shall respond to complaints within ten, not complaint, oh yeah, respond to complaints within ten business days, and shall provide notification to the zoning administrator. So if they get a complaint, they've gotta respond to it and let you know. Any resolution shall include lawful and reasonable solutions consistent with the zoning ordinance, which shall also be provided to the zoning administrator. So if they work out a resolution, they have to let you know. The operator or its assigned reserve the right to adjudicate any claims, including residential claims, in a court of competent jurisdiction. I think, I, I like, I wanna actually reword that, I'm not sure what that is.
Which one?
The operator or its assigned reserve the right to adjudicate any claims, including residential claims, in a court of competent jurisdiction.
Could be adjoining residence, non-participating landowner and property owner.
Yeah, but who's suing who?
I don't know. We haven't got that far. We're still working on the abandonment.
An annual report shall be submitted to the zoning administrator and the township board to details all complaints received, the status of complaint resolution, and action statement mitigating complaints. Maintenance and repair. Each utility scale solar energy system shall be kept and maintained in good repair and condition at all times, and the site shall be neat, clean, and free of refuse, waste, or unsightly hazardous or unsanitary conditions. All solar panels damaged beyond repair or use shall be replaced and removed from the project site within seven days and shall be disposed of off-site in accordance with any state or federal requirements. If the township board or zoning administrator determines that a system fails to meet the requirements of this ordinance or special land use permit, the zoning administrator or township board shall provide notice to the owner and/or operator of the non-compliance, and the owner and/or operator has 14 days to cure the violation. If the violation is a safety hazard as determined by the zoning administrator or township board, then the owner and/or operator has seven days to cure the violation. If the owner and/or operator has not remedied non-compliance issues in the aforementioned time periods, the owner and/or operator shall immediately shut down the utility scale solar energy system and shall not operate, start, or restart the system until the issues have been resolved. If the owner, operator fails to bring the operation into compliance, the township may seek relief at law or equity to abate the nuisance and may also issue municipal civil infraction citation. Each violation for which the owner, operator, are deemed responsible shall result in $500 fine. But the part about equity means you can also go get an injunction requiring them to do what they have to do. Applicant, oh yeah, we need, we do need to be more consistent here with owner, operator versus applicant. Shall keep a maintenance log on the solar arrays, which shall be available for the township's review within 48 hours of such request.
A point on, when it says owner, operator, I believe they're referring to the utility or whoever operating the system.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's also going to be the same as your applicant, it's usually not your landowner who's, who's submitting the application, it's the same, but I think sometimes, we, we certainly say applicant in the application section, but when we get down into some of these substantive requirements, sometimes we're saying owner, operator, and sometimes we're saying applicant, where we probably now need to say owner, operator.
Okay.
Uh, general maintenance bond. At the time of the special land use application, the owner, operator shall submit two third-party contractor bids for construction of all fencing, landscaping, and drainage improvements associated with the system. A performance bond in the amount of 125% of the higher bid shall be provided to the township to ensure completion. The township may use the bond to complete or repair any landscaping, fencing, or drainage infrastructure, including drain tiles. Extraordinary events. If the system experiences a failure, fire, leakage of hazardous materials, personal injury, or other extraordinary or catastrophic event, the applicant or operator, who's trying to say owner, operator, no, shall notify the township within eight hours. Annual report. The applicant or operator shall submit a report on or before January 1st of each year that includes all of the following. Amount of electric generation, current proof of insurance with the township and participating property owner shown as the named insurer, verification of financial security, and a summary of all complaints, complaint resolutions, and extraordinary events. Additionally, a representative of the applicant or operator, that's just gonna be owner, operator, we'll figure out how we wanted to find that, shall appear before the planning commission annually to report on the system and address questions or concerns from the planning commission. Inspections. The township may inspect a utility scale solar energy system at any time by providing 24 hours advanced notice to the applicant or operator. Transferability. Okay. A special use permit for a system is transferable to a new owner. The new owner shall register its name, federal employer identification number, and business address 30 days prior to the transfer date with the township, and shall comply with this ordinance and all approvals and conditions issued by the township. In the event of a sale or transfer of ownership, uh, transfer of ownership and or operation of the solar facility, the original security bond and escrow shall be maintained throughout the entirety of the process and shall not be altered. So if they sell it, right, it's owned by utility company A, and they sell to utility company B, you're still gonna have all those financial securities in place, the seller can't gank back their escrow. Those have to be maintained.
With that language there.
Right, with this language there, and the buyer is subject to all the provisions of this ordinance. So they can't say, well, we weren't the applicant, we bought it later, so we don't have to follow this. This provision makes them subject to it.
Same issue on land ownership.
So landowner, we're gonna look at is what the landowner is responsible for, um, because there's, I'm gonna address this now, let's go back to what, all the time when a landowner actually has liability, because we may need to add it in here. Certainly if the landowner, I, I, I think, and we can make it more explicit.
Well, these, this landowner is part of these lease agreements, okay, whether they're contractual between the two entities or part of the application and operation process with the township, okay? They are involved.
They're involved.
Yes.
But they're not automatically responsible for everything that the utility company does, yeah.
Understood, understood.
So what I want to show is that there's parts of the application process where the landowner has some involvement, but once it's operational, I'm not sure your ordinance imposes any specific duties or obligations on the landowner. So if the property sells, I don't know what we would ever be going after the landowner for. Once, let's say it's up and running and approved, and the property sells, what different liability or what liability does the landowner have in that situation? Because the landowner's not indemnifying the township, the landowner doesn't have the money to indemnify the township. It's the, it's the operator who has the insurance. So you've got your decommissioning cash, right, your 125%, you've got the financial security during construction to make sure that gets done, you've got yourself, as a township, and the landowner for that matter, named as additional insurance on a $250 million insurance policy in case of any event that causes damage. You've got the operator indemnifying or holding you harmless. So I'm not sure if there's a specific obligation of the landowner that we would be concerned about if the land sold.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I'm glad you did, it's really helpful to talk through that to make sure you're covered. Now to your question, what if they go belly up? I think this protects you to the extent that you can ever be protected in terms of the decommissioning cash that you'll have on hand. So if they close down, shut shop, and say, we filed bankruptcy, we just closed our doors, we're done, um, you've got that money there to, to, to get the decommissioning done, the full cost of decommissioning plus the 25% because then you have to actually do the work of scheduling it all and getting it done.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I believe it was 25 million in seances.
Oh, I'm sorry.
250, 250 would be nice.
I, you're, you're correct, I misspoke, there were so many zeros.
What about putting a new landowner on the insurance?
I think they have to be, um, on the insurance. It requires the insurance begun annually, and it has to name the landowner, so if the landowner changes during that year, then the new insurance policy at the next year would have to have the new property owner. All right. Uh, right, where, where? Major and minor site plan amendments. So sometimes plans change, and this sets forth what needs to come, um, you know, back to you under the zoning ordinance as major site plan amendments versus not. Major site plan amendments include those otherwise listed in your zoning ordinance under fourteen point OAC, along with changes of the location of the, of arrays, fencing, buildings, or ancillary equipment by ten feet or more, or any increase in the height of solar panels. Minor site plan amendments are those in the zoning ordinance and the change of the location of arrays, fencing, buildings, or ancillary equipment by less than ten feet. Remedies. If an applicant or operator fails to comply with this ordinance, the township, in addition to any other remedy under this ordinance, shall revoke the special land use permit and site plan approval after giving the applicant or operator notice and an opportunity to be heard. Additionally, the township may pursue any legal or equitable action to abate a violation and recover any lost costs, including the township's actual attorney fees and costs. And then the rest is just the kind of boilerplate.
To go back to the insurance.
Yes.
It says the county township and each participating property owner, where are the non-participating property owners covered?
I don't believe that they are listed as additional insured on the policy.
So if something happened, and there was a fire, and it transferred onto somebody else's property and burned down part of their woods or a field, something like that, where would that be covered?
They're not an additional insured, but if they made, if they made a claim.
Right.
They may still be able to get money.
Okay.
But they're not actually an insured.
Okay.
Nor, nor, nor do I think you could force them to be.
You couldn't force them to be?
I'm not sure you could, but.
Just in case something happens and transfers over to somebody else's property that's not participating.
Right, they need to make a claim, because you can see.
They can make a claim to the insurance company.
They can make a claim, correct. They're not gonna automatically get a check.
I just didn't know if that belonged.
Because otherwise, if you did it that way, if there was a fire on the property, the other people would get the money, even if it didn't affect their property, because they'd be the insured. So you go, say like, it's a, yeah.
So they would get part of that.
Right, if it didn't affect them, so.
No, until it's jumped.
Yeah. What did you say this, SPS?
It's just SPS nowadays, unless, or so it should be.
All right, we'll get with the times. Do we want to talk over later, Mr.?
I have a question, Laura, if I could. Um, under your site plan, applications number nine, I have a note from when we went over it Friday with Mike, that he added additional studies requested by the planning commission, and he added, and paid for by the applicant, and maybe I missed it, I did not see it there.
Okay, I'm not sure that it is there.
It, it previously said it under each section, and he wiped it out of each section and stuck it right at the top to say that, to make it clear that all of those were to be paid for by the applicant.
Yeah, hang on, I, I think there is a catch-all somewhere, so.
So perhaps he took it out because it was a catch-all somewhere out?
Because obviously the applicant's paying for, you know, all of these studies, the solamelling studies, all of their work, but we could add, yeah, here it is. The applicant shall at its expense provide a detail with the following. So that's the catch-all, it's not theirs, that it's at, at its expense.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I wonder for the planning commission, um, what's not listed in those studies, which I believe were in a previous drafts, maybe even your drafts, was a wildlife study. That's not there anymore. So is that something we want?
A wildlife study.
No, I think it was in a very original draft, and now it's not.
Uh, I think it's part of the environmental analysis.
Could we just add wildlife to it?
It's part of the trees, wetlands, and, and ecosystem.
Environmental, environmental analysis is defined as an analysis by a third-party qualified professional to identify and assess any potential impacts on the natural environment, including but not limited to removal of trees, wetlands, and other fragile ecosystems, wildlife, endangered and threatened species.
Perfect, and one last thing for the planning commission. Um, on Friday, Mike made a statement that, gave me pause. He said, he had no idea where the sixteen foot came from in the height of these panels. Kinda left it at that, it's just in the air. That, to me begs the question, is do we want it sixteen feet? Cahockta's making it twelve with some caveat of they can go four foot higher if decided, but I mean, if they're not actually gonna graze animals under it, do we need it to be sixteen feet? And if Mike's saying, as a litigator, he doesn't even know where that number came from, do we want them that high?
I know from the, when I visited the site in Chilwazi County, is that they used that sixteen feet, fifteen feet is what the height of theirs is.
We did.
Because of that, they have, because of the ground cover underneath, they have to have them that high to maintain the ground cover to the height where the wildlife can use it. So the pollinators and everything, so if it was any taller than that, they would have to go in and brush hog it on, on a monthly basis, and then that would defeat the purpose of having a pollinator habitat, so therefore, that's why they're at that height.
Okay.
So, that's how it was explained to me by the guy who was the director over there, so. He's the guy that runs the actual system over there. He's their, he's their main guy that runs the whole project, so.
Thank you.
Yep. I had a question about the work schedule.
Sure.
I don't think we should have all major holidays in there, government holidays.
You don't?
We're gonna restrict them to five days a week anyway. So I mean, if they wanna work on Memorial Day, that's their problem, not mine.
I disagree.
Just like, it's not gonna affect anybody.
Christmas?
They can work on Christmas if they want to, but that's your choice. If they wanna play their employees, you know, triple time to do so, why, why does that bother? It doesn't bother me.
What if the neighbors have?
Well, once you see the overlay, you won't worry about neighbors, because they won't hate you.
Okay, let's get to it then.
Let's get to it.
You wanna get to it?
Let's get to it.
All right, let's do it.
I'm ready. Hundred and thirty-six acres.
And I can, I'll zoom this out too, this is with parcel numbers. The next page has it synced out more. You guys will have to describe this in more global terms.
Do you want a, on the local website?
And that farm is owned by Van Gilders.
So that's behind the old Farrell, Farrell's farm.
Yes, and the, the county ditch runs to the north of it and down in front of it, and that, that home has actually been purchased by Van Gilders. So the only property that's actually affected is that one, and there's a couple other people that own the woods that are on the backside of that.
Yeah, right here, there's some property, but it's about a thousand feet to that.
Right.
Mark there.
So where's, what roads?
That's Marley, Marley, what, that's where it's located.
See, it's more.
It's over, it's over, it's between, it's over.
Just north, don't you mean to try to load on Google Maps, or?
If you go to, gee, I should, so.
Can I help you?
Here's our, here's our assistant assessor, she'll probably.
Will you go to Google?
Yeah. Why would they put it where there's no power?
Yeah.
What was that parcel number, eleven?
It's right behind you. Part of eleven.
I can't see it.
Oh.
You guys have that number?
Eleven is a border, or eleven is a border.
Yep.
It actually goes into twelve.
It's eleven zero two and eleven zero zero three, and then twelve zero zero.
Yeah, but see how I missed one? It includes the big parcel number, it's like, you close. Oh, yeah.
So there's actually property on the other side of the drainage ditch.
You're funny.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
What are those, three hundreds?
I can give them to you. You got one that she can?
Yes.
It should be right on there.
There's those three hundreds.
It should be two hundred, two hundred zero zero two.
Yeah, and then four hundred oh oh two, and then one hundred dash oh oh three over here, right?
Yeah.
And the other one is in section twelve.
Right, right, so if you go down farther.
There it is.
It runs along the, that's the drain, right?
That's the main drain here.
Yeah, it, the drain is a kinda delineator.
So now that part, that, that bigger part on the, on the north side? Northeast corner, because it's all the same parcel listing.
Right.
Does that have to be included in the overlay?
No, we, we, we did not follow parcel lines.
Okay.
Exactly, because you see, because here, and then we also didn't go all the way down. This parcel extends further.
Right.
But because we wanted to allow space from these other properties down here, we wanted to allow, you know, a thousand-foot buffer there.
Right.
We kinda drew the line basically roughly right here.
Do we know who owns the house across the street from the bigger house? You said that's Van Gilder property there, but what?
I don't think there is a house here.
Over here?
It's the only thing, there's one house within.
There's a house across the street from that farm right there.
Tiny little one right there.
This one?
Yeah.
If you click on GIS, I can show you how to do it.
Okay.
Oh, here it goes.
And then click property.
That is great.
That is, Gail, Gail and O'Leasman.
Gail Smith.
But they're gonna be, let's see, so we.
So do you wanna see how to measure on there?
Yeah, I, yeah, I got it, yeah. I was doing a fair bit of that earlier.
So from the road to the drainage ditch.
Yeah, you're looking at like five hundred and fifty feet.
And then how far on the other side of the drainage ditch is the second?
Hundred and fifty feet.
So it's seven hundred feet away.
So almost a thousand.
There's a power line at the corner.
And remember, we don't have a thousand in the draft right now.
Right, we don't have a thousand in the draft, which would, doesn't necessarily.
Exactly.
And that's a good find.
There's, there's a power line right there too, right?
Yeah, down the transmission line, certain.
No, the, the power, the thing with this is, the thing with this is that the power line, the most relevant to it, is in Cahockta.
Okay.
So it's going to be, Jerry could probably help us the most, is just north of Gannon Road and east of Alaso Road. So as the crow flies, you're talking about from the southeast corner piece that you got that goes into piece twelve, you're less than a mile, or about one mile to the, to the proposed or possibility of a power line. But it, it would tie in, the closest one would be Cahockta.
So I have a question regarding that. With the closest power line being in Cahockta, would, if this is where the overlay goes, would they have to get permission from Cahockta and the other property owners to hook up to those transmission lines?
I don't, I mean, it's going to go underground, and that is true, they are, I think they likely already have, the utility company already knows how they're gonna get it there, right, or else they're, assuming that this property already has a lease, right? Um, then there's already a plan for getting that property there, and it's through the rights of way, probably through, I don't know if it's consumers or ITC that has it. So to answer your question, no, I don't believe that would require any kind of approval from Cahockta, it's just power coming into existing transmission lines.
But the actual transmission system would be on the, kind of like.
I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if that's the case or not.
It would have to be in Cahockta.
But where it goes to the main transmission line would be up there at the corner where it goes from north to turn east, right, right north of Gannon Road.
So they would have easements underground through the, through the woods.
They gotta have a way to connect it.
To way to connect it, so then the transmission station would actually be in Cahockta.
I mean, if they're building something in Cahockta, then, yeah, but if it's already all existing infrastructure that's connecting to that.
My concern is, and let me kinda spell it out, that way maybe I'm missing something or not understanding something. What I'm saying is, is if the overlay is placed in an area where it doesn't have direct hookups to a transmission line, and if they need permission from other property owners to access those lines, if other property owners say, no, we're not granting you access, can we really put the overlay there?
I think you can, you're always saying that, well, you have to get permission, you're oh, no matter where you put it, somebody's going to have to get permission, right?
It's not a township issue.
Right.
Van Gilders could say no.
What if they couldn't get a lease? What if they said, we have our overlay here, but we can't agree to a lease price? Well, but still, you're still allowing land use there, that's kind of the business part of it.
How the applicant ties the electrical into the grid is not the township's issue.
Except that we wanna know, that's part of the application.
But it's, it's not a township issue.
Right, I'm just making sure it can't come back on us.
Oh, I can't, sorry, I can't hear her, thanks.
I'm just making sure it can't come back on us. You know, like, what, I'm just saying theoretical here, if we were to put the overlay over secluded acre subdivision, obviously that particular overlay cannot be used over secluded acres.
Is that a motion?
No, definitely. But I'm saying, you know, clearly we can't, the, the solar energy system can't be placed on top of a subdivision, right? It just can't, can't be used for that purpose. So is this parcel completely and 100% usable to a solar energy system if it were to be put there?
Two answers. First, we never use 100% when we're lawyers, okay, there.
Sure.
Second, one of the reasons we looked at this location, that Mike looked at this location as well, is because it was best positioned to get energy out there based on where, I think there was looking at two different ways that possibly the power could get transmitted. And I think the reality is, you wouldn't have a utility company looking at this parcel if they didn't have a way to get that electricity to the grid.
And I think the other thing Mike was worried about was that position to where it needs to go to get the power to the lines, he was also, the minimal amount of impact on the housing.
Correct, that's exactly right, yep, was the, with the least amount of impact, and certainly this location has less impact than some other locations make out.
Right. And I agree with that, I just wanted to make sure it can't come back on us if they are trying to connect to the transmission lines, and they can't.
Right.
That's not our problem.
So whoever's trying to do all this, whether it be Range or Power, ETE, consumers, they can't take us to court and say, you put it someplace where we can't use it?
Well, we can't get an easement, well, that's kinda your.
That's your problem.
That's kinda your problem.
Doesn't follow the township law, George.
So there are, there are pathways to get it there.
Right.
I don't, not that I agree with it, but I think Michael might think that it needs to be within two miles of the power grid.
Yeah, it's less than a mile, it's about a mile or less.
This is less than a mile, I think this is, you know, this is, the thing here is, the thing here is that we're giving them, somebody that wants this in their area, and we have the feasibility, it still has to get across private property, but as they said, they've already done some studies to try to figure out how to do that.
That's right.
You know, this could move to the east, but I don't believe there's anybody here that wants it to the next section to the east. So, I mean, the underground power going across there is probably the least effective to anybody over there than trying to have the solar panels over there.
Yeah, excuse me, it's my understanding, as I read some of the leases, that they do have a lease through Shabrick's Properties.
So they already have a lease in place?
Yes, yes.
They have a way, even if they've, they've gotta go more than a mile, they've got a way, otherwise they wouldn't lease property, which they, more than likely they have.
Maybe they would.
And obviously you guys have done your homework, so.
Yeah, yeah, Mike spent, I know Mike spent quite a bit of time.
Wanna click on that parcel number?
Sorry, which one, this one?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I'm in the wrong, yeah, hang on, this is not the, we'll. This one? Sorry, the wooded one or north of the wooded one?
It'd be right to the wooded one.
This one?
Would you say the homeowner's name was?
That, that land that is on Heener Road, that, that easement is on Heener Road.
No, this one is Van Gilder, so Van Gilder owns this parcel and that.
Right.
So it's the woods.
He lives there. Yeah, but it's way north of that.
So do you wanna know the woods?
The woods is what, that's.
Oh, okay.
It would be the one north of the woods.
North of the drains, you're doing.
Now, that would be, no, I'm sorry. Now, that would be, no, I'm sorry, but I meant east.
Right here. Shadrack.
Yes, there's an easement, it's my understanding there's an easement through that, I didn't bring my information today.
That's correct.
Here's the map, Steve, and I'll sign up property that township.
How many acres was this again?
The overlay, as I told you, is a hundred and thirty-six acres. So. What does the planning commission think?
I think it's.
I don't like it.
I think it's, it's a good, it's a good overlay, but I think your needs all need to be addressed.
Excuse me, I'm not turned out. I don't know, I, I think it's a good place, I don't know if everybody else agrees, like George said, it's not the township's issue to, whether or not they got easements for the other property, so. Doesn't even fall in, in our purview, so, but I believe it's a good spot.
As far as vision, I think it only, it's gonna be involved with one house on the west side, whoever owns the farm across, or the house across from where this farm was.
And as far as the property to the south.
Actually, Van Gilder owns all the property in the south that goes all the way to Heiner Road, comes out to Rob, at the end of Rob Road.
Oh, do they own all that?
Almost.
Almost all of it. It's the stuff that's to the east behind the farm that belongs to other people, the woods, like Steve said, those brothers. And I think Davis is the other one to the north.
Eldon Davis.
Yeah, Eldon Davis, yes.
And that borders Brad Elliott's.
That borders Brad Elliott's property?
Yep.
So if our demonstrated need is only twenty to twenty-five acres, why a hundred and thirty?
I don't think we ever determined that twenty to twenty-five acres.
No, we already did.
It was discussed, I don't know.
It's real close in the township, you can, you can go online and find out the amount of power that we use, quite simple. So, and we knew it was gonna be bigger than that.
Right.
But the number is in the, somewhere between seventeen to twenty-five acres of, of a utility power. Why a hundred and thirty necessary?
Future use?
That's why you, that's why you double it to fifty. Which I think would be a long time coming.
Personally, my recommended overlay area is attached to the field by the township hall. And then whoever buys the property, whoever puts the system in, puts a substation in and we get our power from them. And then we save the township money. That's my, that's my suggestion.
It's a nice suggestion, but I don't think it'll ever happen, so it's free power, I just don't think it'll happen.
This field right here. You got three houses that are involved, two across the street, and the one that's by the landowner, that owns the property. And then another one down at the top of the hill. And then, and then we could use the setbacks and set them wherever we can do. And I don't know what the size of that property is, whether it would meet the need that we were just discussing about usage, so.
In my, in my looking around the township, I guess, for something like that, and I'm not, I, I kind of like this setup myself. But if there's another proposed area that somebody would look at, is just throwing it out here, is across the street, behind the old Sherwood Farm, there is a square wood lot with a good sized parcel to the north between that and the next wood lot, which is completely. It is north of the airport, but yet it's next to the power lines directly, and there's gotta be, it's gotta be a sixty, seventy acre feeling.
And there's already been, and there's already been a lease to purchase the old Klein Farm, which is eighty acres, which is right underneath the power lines.
Do you know the piece I'm talking about over here?
Yeah, and then, I think Gary brought up the, to us that the, they've already got agreement to purchase eighty acres from the old Klein Farm underneath the transmission lines, it goes straight. That would end up right behind your house, Steve.
But I mean, there's, there's pros and cons to everything, does somebody else hire, have something that they had set up or thought of? I mean, it's not gonna fit completely everywhere with anybody, but.
There's any reason to reduce the one thirty-six down to seventy-five?
Well, I wondered if we put this on George Robb's farm, which is also our trailer park designated area. If we kill two birds with one stone.
It's already designated as a trailer park.
Well.
It's already overlaid.
Right, I mean, could you put a second overlay or is that, George, thank you.
Listen, Steve.
I mean, Brandy said she would rather have a solar farm there than a trailer park.
I don't think it would, wouldn't override at all, so they, you gotta have X amount of room for trailer park, correct? Just move somewhere else.
Do you have a trailer park there?
It's, actually, could be one, if the landowner ever sold it, which I believe he just did. Is, is, it could be sold and turned into a trailer park, because that's the designated area for it.
I've never seen those two uses in the same parcel.
Just put a solar panel on top of your trailer, good to go.
How many acres is the trailer?
I don't even believe that belonged to Van Gilders. I think not at the time. It was George Robb's, but then Van Gilder's bought it, they still own it.
They just left mashed up the house and sold it. It just doesn't make sense to me to not have it where there's power line. Yeah, and that's on the wrong side of the road, so it's all on the same.
Yeah, I think you can get it there from here, I don't think that's a, a real, you know, concern.
Yeah, all connections were gonna be underground.
Correct, but then.
The farther north you go, I mean, they're gonna have to go underground, because under the property.
But there is a power line.
Right, and I think the intent of this was to have the accessibility of the power lines with the least disruption to other.
The key is the least disruption or effects of adjacent property.
Exactly.
Like I said, you know, originally, I think, I think it's a perfect place for it. I just thought I would mention my plan, but.
It didn't seem to get traction.
No, it didn't. It was well thought out then.
This is good, the setback would, would be important here, especially with a little.
That one house, it's just a setback down that side on our road.
Yeah.
That is something to keep in mind, if you're looking at a bigger parcel like this, a hundred and.
Thirty-six.
A hundred and thirty-six acres, those setbacks can be bigger.
Well, they'd be minimized along where the woods is at.
Right.
You could cut those back down to two hundred.
Well, we had Dave.
A thousand from the woods, that's, that's a third of a mile. You can't, I mean, there's no way, you're, you're gonna take a hundred and thirty-six acres and reduce it down to ten.
You can't do the one I proposed with a thousand feet from that other house, it doesn't work, you'd have to cut it smaller.
We need at least five hundred for vacant land.
From vacant land?
Yes, absolutely. You know, I'm very familiar with that property, it's been my family since well over a hundred years, it's pristine. You've gotta have a decent setback for that.
Yeah, Brad's.
Especially, it's on both sides of it.
Does the overlay start from the property line or the overlay in the district?
Well, the wildlife is gonna go all up in there and get trapped and they won't have a place to go, so hunting will be much easier.
The setbacks from parcel line to parcel line.
Well, I'm just saying.
So the north line, it already includes a huge setback because it's not part of the overlay.
Yeah, that's actually a really good point, right, where the.
And the south line.
The, the district line does not run along parcel lines, so we may, you may want to think about how you want to do that setback because if your, if your actual overlay stops here, but your parcel line stops down here, you're not gonna have a big setback parcel line to parcel line. But you are gonna have a big setback of the actual house to the actual system.
That's what I was concerned by.
Yeah, so you can, you can, we can draft that however you want.
Did you say it was on both sides of the ditch?
No.
Just the south.
The act, yeah, it's not on both sides, the parcel is on both sides of the ditch, but the overlay is not.
See, the district runs along the, the ditch.
So is it coming up behind your house?
Yeah.
It's, it's what he said it is.
So it's not this part here. It's just down here. Whoops, whoops, sorry. I'm dizzy, down halfway down this part. So past place is that parcel.
Right about where the door jam is. That's a good place for it.
Oh, okay, I can hear, I'm at doors.
So where, where is Sugar Lane on there?
A little bit south to the right.
Well, here's Sugar Lane.
I don't know where Sugar Lane is.
Well, Sugar Lane has like, what, eight houses on it?
Well, you can see there aren't a lot of houses, when you zoom out here. The other, the nearest, other houses are down here, which is well over a thousand feet away. So there's really, I mean, it's not a, not a populated area right there.
What is Sugar Lane off of?
Heiner.
Heiner.
Oh.
Oh, that's well south.
It's kind of like right off the end of.
Where you go off Marsh Road and turn right and it's right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I looked at a house in there one time.
Is that this?
It's still well south of this.
East of Rob Road, right there.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, that's quite a.
That's like two miles away.
Yeah, that's here, I'll tell you. You gotta clear the measurement before you can reset it. We go here.
That's why Brandy's here.
I play with this every day.
So roughly an inch of here. There we go. So up there, it's like a mile.
I like it.
Can you tell me that it's only a mile from there to Gannon and Fleming Road?
I didn't say that, I just said from that little spot that I got it.
Just about one mile or under, if you go from the top, where's your, the piece, right?
There's our piece.
Right to the right, down, right in there, that, that east boundary line right there.
Here?
No, up to the property, where you were.
Right there in the corner where the woods comes, yeah, where the woods comes together.
Yes, from there, where it goes, where Gannon Road comes in.
Sorry, which one is Gannon Road?
Can I come on that?
Yeah, sorry, to your east, to the east of the orange line?
I think Gannon Road is the orange line, yes.
Okay.
Jerry, where's your, you're right, you're right there, right, Jerry? So right, right there is Gannon Road, power line is right above left finger.
Okay, so you got me a measure from there to there?
But that's not where the district is, that's not where Kahakta's district is.
Kahakta district starts right here.
So that's less than a mile, that's about forty-six hundred.
But it's right up here, right about here, right over here. It's just about that.
You can't.
So it's just under one.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not sure, all right. So I think the planning commission can, you know, if you want to go back to the drawing board on a different location, we can do that, or if you want to move forward with this. I mean, the changes to the text that we made tonight are fairly minor, and, you know, get that cleaned up, and I guess you're at the point of, you know, signing, signing public hearings.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we, based on previous conversations that we've had about setbacks, are we able to transpose, like, let's say, take this picture of this?
Yep.
And impose the setbacks that we were talking about to see actually what it's gonna look like? With what we were originally thinking on setbacks, and then kind of go from there, do we need to decrease, do we need to increase, to where we need to go on.
How much of the hundred and thirty-six acres would still be usable if you went through the original setback?
Well, and then you'd have to, I mean, if the setbacks are parcel line to parcel lines, that eliminates.
So like around, around the woods, if you went five hundred feet? But ba- based on Homer's demonstrated need, whatever that calculation was, all right, or is, and then superimpose that into this drawing, so we can get a better idea of how we can adjust our setbacks, maybe we can make it work, maybe we can't.
So, oh, I guess that was, so you're talking about, for example, this property right here, which, that one is, I want to make sure that's not owned by the same.
That's the same, that's all owned by Van Gilders.
So, oh, it's this one, it's the triangle one that we're worried about, so I was kinda measuring from the wrong one. Okay, so it's the triangle parcel we're concerned about?
So from the property line or from the actual?
But see, it's a, if you did parcel line to parcel line, they're adjacent, so you couldn't, you, you know?
Right, well, there's, Marsh Road is in between them.
Yeah, it's there, so if you wanted to say.
So you've got the width of the road plus where the house is at.
So if you wanted to do from there, from the non-participating triangle parcels, property line to the fence?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then let's do.
Considering in your hundred and fifty foot setback from the drain, which is in the actual application.
They bought it last year.
So if you wanted to measure.
I sold it before.
Yeah, and then Matt has sold it to. Well, it's hard to figure out, so I gotta figure out the hundred and fifty is first, I guess. So a hundred and fifty feet from the drain is, I mean, almost precise, right? Hard to get a check, we could get it more precise than we do right now. Your accessory, I'm lost in this. All right, roughly that, right? So that's what's it, taking into account of roughly a hundred and fifty foot setback from the drain to that other property line, you're at like seven hundred and thirty feet.
That's very feasible.
Yeah.
I think that's acceptable. Especially sightline, because the, where the house is at, you can't, with all the silos and the barns and everything, you really can't, you can't see that stuff anyway.
So would you, you'd be looking, what kind of setback then would you look at actually writing into the?
Sub, sub, yeah, sub, yeah.
Did he include that side piece to the northeast?
Yes.
As a parcel? Because it's adjacent, so that they would use the center area, so maybe it wouldn't affect the, the wooded areas? Because that would include their, because they're particip, or they own that?
Right, that was the thought, and because of that drain.
They kind of use that circle?
Yeah, because there's the drain, right, so you've got that, you're buffering it in already, so it kind of does give some opportunities to develop it even further away from those existing homes.
So the screening would be between the ditch, a hundred and fifty foot setback, correct?
It would be inside the setback, yes.
So if we go back to our text. Our setbacks.
But with the seven fifty, can you use that corner piece is what I was trying to ask?
Oh.
Or is that just giving them a buffer to get away from that other piece? Because if you have to do seven fifty from the top and the bottom from there.
Okay, so you're saying from this, this is not, ah, stop measuring, sorry.
I can go get you a mouse if you want.
I know, I, I would have the same problem with mouse, I said I was good at typing, you didn't ask me about this.
You didn't know you were gonna get an educational.
There we go.
Process on GIS.
There we go, I do use it a lot, but I don't measure that often, I guess. All right, so this parcel, right, is the Eldon Davis parcel, so do you want to see then, where's seven fifty? Sorry. All right.
Because the southern parcel.
Well, if you go to the drainage ditch.
Seven fifty to seven fifty, I feel like that eats up that parcel.
Yeah, because that's kind of too much.
No, no, you can't.
So seven fifty, Davis didn't get any easement, did he?
I don't remember that name.
I think two fifty all the way around the rest of it.
I mean, seven fifty takes a.
It takes that whole section out of it.
Yeah, and then if you go north. Yeah, and then if you go north from that one, then south from.
So you have the front setback, which would be, could be the seven fifty, and then your side setbacks and your setback can be less.
Well, I'm wondering if we left at the seven fifty, that would make them build in that center, and it would eliminate it being close to like that hunting lane that's back there.
Does, does the setbacks go on underground too? Or just?
No, the setback would be from the number city line essentially to the fence of the.
Where the solar system was.
Right, where the system is.
So if it's underground, it doesn't matter?
No, because your underground lines are gonna go, for example, across easements on other properties, so no, the setback doesn't.
Okay, and they can't fence that in or anything?
It's underground, so you wouldn't fence that in.
So that shouldn't affect the hunters? I'm trying to get the guy in.
Yeah. So does seven fifty um put too much on the other side?
I think it does.
So five hundred looks like?
I would say two fifty all the way around. Including including the woods, two hundred and fifty is a lot.
Two fifty puts.
And that's not even including what the fence is.
We should have extras.
Two fifty is rough. Right there. That's five hundred. This is two fifty.
Two fifty.
Because if they go five, I don't think that's gonna be feasible. No.
If they do five, that parcel's.
And then on the on the north side, you're gonna go along the drainage ditch at a hundred and fifty.
Correct.
Yeah.
So then the south side, you could go two fifty, and then on the other side, where where the L shape goes down to the woods, you could go two fifty all the way around to the drainage ditch.
Who owns that, that was the twelve, right, one more, right?
His brother.
This?
Yes.
His brother.
Harry Van Smith?
Yeah. So yeah, you have to draw out five hundred feet.
Why not lodge it on the air side and keep bigger setbacks?
What? Is it the drainage ditch? Yeah, the drainage ditch creates an automatic hundred and fifty foot setback.
Right, but you could still, Van Gylers own to the north of that property too, or north of the ditch as well.
North of the ditch also.
Yeah, why not do it on the larger area with bigger setbacks?
Because if you put solar arrays on the north side of the ditch, you gotta go through the ditch or under the ditch to get power over to the other, plus it's not in the overlay. So now you're increasing the size of the overlay, you could have two separate connections.
You're going through a ditch, you're going through a ditch to the east too.
No, the ditch ain't. They can bore underneath it then, yes.
Yeah, I I would really have a bigger overlay district. I would really have a bigger setback, even if it means we have to enlarge the overlay district.
But that doesn't help, because even that parcel there is narrower, so the setback is still gonna take up all the property if it's a bigger setback. Like if you say it's a seven hundred fifty foot setback, it's still gonna take up that whole parcel, so that means.
Well, I think we need at least five hundred feet, that's pretty much in every ordinance I've ever looked at, some or more.
If that doesn't work, then they can look for a different area.
What if there is no other bigger, better area?
Well, there is other areas, I mean, Dave Dave mentioned a couple areas that aren't bad, in my opinion, the one Sean that you're talking about here is not bad either, but if the setbacks don't work, then we move it to a different area.
Right, but I'm saying, like, even if we take those, and and I'm just, I'm throwing out hypotheticals right now, okay, because I'm trying to look for best case scenario for everybody, right?
Sure.
If we can't and we don't have a parcel within Conway Township that will meet five hundred foot setbacks or a thousand foot setbacks as we are looking into. What do we do?
I think we can find it.
I've been all over this township on GIS, I will tell you, and everywhere you go, and I'm sorry to say it, everywhere you go, you end up with more houses than what you're looking at right there.
Right.
I followed it, I followed it, I followed the transmission lines, I went towards Kahakta, and then it's like, oh, God, there's a bunch of people there, there's a bunch of people there, it sucks.
But this is by far the least amount of houses, it's right where you're looking. I'm telling you right now.
It's the least least amount of houses, and I would like to know what the road travel count is in a day, because I don't.
A lot.
What?
On Marsh Road?
On Marsh Road?
Everybody going up, everybody going up to Sober, there is a lot of track, I live on Sober Road, okay? It is very heavily traveled road.
People turn on Hayner and go up to Marsh to go on Sober to go outside of the township.
Because if you follow follow the road all the way around.
Because then you don't have to go all the way around and go up to Sober Road and go all the way across. So it is very highly traveled.
So if you do a five hundred foot setback, what, how many acres would you end up with?
That's that's, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't done that calculation.
Can that be done on GIS? Random?
I can do it on Google Maps in raw square if she lets me get a mouse.
Yes, you can have a mouse.
Yeah, because I think we need to make sure that A, that.
I think with those five hundred foot setbacks and the two fifty, and one and one hundred and fifty on there, probably reduce it down to.
Or actually, we can draw a square.
There's no reason they could not expand that to the north across that ditch.
Does it include this right here?
I thought you were gonna get out here early.
Who would have this one?
That's why we came.
So the the district would start here, yeah.
You're right.
It's a hundred and fifty.
Fifty, so it'll be a hundred and fifty around the drainage ditch, because this is.
Same parcel.
The same parcel, and then five hundred here, five hundred here, five hundred here, and then this is the same parcel, so it's way bigger.
Yep.
I have a question, the drains.
Can you bring that down a little bit?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe.
They were as low.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The setback on the drains was as low as fifty at one point, and I've seen it in other ordinances as fifty, so is there any wiggle room there, I mean, I don't know the.
It can get all the way down to twenty-five, that's what the DEQ or the DNR, DEQ, that's what they ego, they only they only require twenty-five feet. And that's kind of why I had originally proposed fifty feet, which will still get you farther away, but then it gives you that extra area that.
Access, access around.
Right, you'll still have access around it.
It does feel like we need extra eight inch, we might get that too.
Yeah, because that would help, because that that whole north line is covered by the ditch, so that would give you quite a bit of extra acreage.
Because we certainly don't want to be in a position where we're short acres and then it's too soon.
What they're meaning is they.
Maybe go a hundred.
Ninety-eight point five acres. I mean, I think originally we had gone down fifty feet on the wetlands and drainage ditches.
And that's where.
And then we left it up to where we could change that.
To a hundred and fifty.
If we wanted.
That's why we tried leaving another. Depending on where it was, so that way you could go bigger if you wanted to or lower if you wanted to.
Because sometimes when you go along that drainage ditch, you may have a natural wetland along the edges of anywhere where the ditch has not been taken care of.
Because a true wetland is usually quite a bit bigger than you think, it's actually, because it's only MIP, May or.
April, May.
October, where it's, you know, where it really gets cold.
So are we moving along or where do we go?
Go ahead. We have to, we have to give beneficial setback.
The fence minimum is, I don't know how far it is.
That's like the last thing we have to finish.
Is it seven fifty on the front and two fifty on the side?
I think it was five hundred.
Five hundred around the woods, two fifty across the back.
Hey, Dave, for the setbacks, is that where the fence starts or the trees start? Or does anybody know that?
The trees would be outside the fence.
It would be what I always say, you would want a fence.
I know, but I I just keep hearing setback, is the setback to where the two rows of trees are or the fence, because that's, you know, an extra ten feet.
So that's a good reason to leave it at one fifty along the drainage ditch, because then you're gonna have to put trees in there.
No, but isn't the setback from the, it's from the overlay district along the.
No, it's not.
Then it wouldn't have to be.
It can't be measured from the overlay district boundary.
There wouldn't be.
It'd be from like the road setback or the the property set, whatever, right, whatever the drain easement is or.
We can say measured from the parcel line of the non-participating property to the nearest fence line of the utility scale solar energy system.
That sounds good.
But is it the fence or the actual, where they start putting panels? Or the trees around the fence?
The fence, the fence, the fence.
So they've just made it the fence?
Yeah, the fence.
So within that will be the trees, the two lines of trees.
And then there's also a space for setback from all other spot lines and all those right away. Thank you.
What page you on?
Uh, this is page eleven eighteen. So these rules are for all utility scale solar energy systems. At at this time. There's going to be an overlay district, it's possible that in the future the township could maybe add another overlay district or expand, and these regulations would apply to any other location as well where they might be committed in the future. There you go. They're not, it's not specific to this property.
Yeah, it would be that, yeah, it applies to the overlay district, and then if we're gonna expand the overlay district to other areas, it would apply there as well.
Correct.
So all we're going through, forget the sales of setback, everything is down through an alley.
No, because you have to, you can't look at it in a vacuum, if you pick out a number without looking at how it works, particularly at the overlay you're looking at having, it it doesn't work, you do have to look at it when you're determining it as to what, how it would work in a particular location.
Um, as far as screening, just to clarify, the only side that would be subject to the screening is the non-participating side, I think it's language rights, so the drain wouldn't, the south side wouldn't.
Oh, yeah.
So it would be the property, property to the south.
It'd only be that side on Marsh Road because of the farmhouses.
Yeah, because Van Gylers owns all the rest of that.
I think it says partic- non-participating.
Which makes that even more of a.
Yeah, that'd have to do with.
To the.
It's just seven fifty.
So then the east side would too, right? So the south and the north would not get trees.
Brandy, what was it from the road, what, did you have like five hundred?
Seven fifty.
You did the sub fifty?
It's seven fifty, because it was a hun- you know how that ditch runs, so if you measured over the hundred and fifty to the road, it ended up being seven fifty.
So the only.
Because they had to use that hundred and fifty, so that's what it was, was seven fifty.
So the only trees would be on that south line, and that would be it.
Well, here and here.
Because you don't have, you don't have to have trees between the fence and the trees, because there's nobody there.
It's a property.
But it's a property line, it's a non.
Do you still have to have trees?
It's not participating property.
So they could, they could have a house on it.
Well, if they ended up, or they made a house on it, then they would have to put trees in later?
No.
They just have to put the trees no matter what.
No, they're not just a partial ditch, but a tree no matter what.
Okay.
Yeah.
So east, west, the trees.
So I'm gonna, I've saved this metric, but I want to do a new. If you, right, go back to the mouse, I showed you.
Their word is site of view.
Clear measurement. Thank you. And then right click to measure.
It is worded, I believe, site of view, so doesn't matter if it's participating, non-participating, or whatever, if it's non-participating and you can't see it, they obviously don't need to do trees.
Right, I agree.
If they can see it from a non-participating property, then they need trees, I believe it is worded site of view, is how it is working. So if you can see it from your house, they have to plant trees.
That's exactly how it's worked.
Or from the road, or whatever.
And there is a house, there is a house to the south.
I believe that's all it's worded.
These two, they would have to, because these two parcel lines even though the overlay says here, these two are non-participating, so would have to have trees all the way around.
Even even even, but if it doesn't, if it's not, they can't see it from their property, given their house, it doesn't have to have it.
Yeah, and the adjacent non-participating properties, you have to have that screening from, so it is on the south too, right? It would be.
So wooded areas, there's different proxies, so therefore.
So one area is, is different property, so therefore, just because there's not a house there...
Right, you would have to have trees.
You would still have to have trees.
Yes, correct.
All the way around that tree.
On this side right here, you would have to have trees.
And on that southern, southeastern side there.
So if the south side is owned by the same, then you person, but he's non-participating on the south side, what does that count?
I think that it says in here, though, that that doesn't apply if they're owned by the same person. There is a ditch that runs through Shadrack, runs north and south.
So 750 from road right of way?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Ah, that's not where I should be.
I'm not sure unless it says from all other lot lines. I mean, you're either a participating property or you're a non-participating property. So I'm not sure what all other lot lines covers. So it'll say for public road rights of way?
I did not participate, participating wasn't there the first time.
I should look at what other lot lines are.
The participating and non-participating wordage wasn't originally there, so that's probably why.
Yeah, it was added, so I think it just got added. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what you have now is a complete draft with a map, so if you were ready to set a public hearing, you can clean this up and provide a notice of that public hearing.
Are we all in agreement?
Yeah.
I guess we all...
I think the 500 feet is a little extreme.
And that can be changed, I mean, again, you're not wedded to all of this. You're having a public hearing, getting more public input, so you can...
Because if you're gonna have 500 feet in a fence and a bunch of trees, what's wrong with 250 as fence and a bunch of trees?
Can we...
Because the trees are gonna end up being absorbed into the woods anyway. So there's another extra barrier. And if someone does put a house in that property, their house is gonna be in the middle of the woods anyway, so they won't be able to see it.
Well, maybe they're gonna clear all their trees, maybe they don't have trees.
It could be, it could be.
Yeah, Caleb.
Can we, for the public hearing, have a map like this, but where it's drawn out, where the public as well as us can see how the setbacks look?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you mean kind of what your successor did, but look, but, but with like labels and things a little bit more formal?
Yes, that way we, if it can be drawn, like literally drawn on top of this, so we can see what it looks like as it stands now.
Sure.
Alright, so do we have to make an official that we...
I think, no, we have to get the draft made up.
Um, but if you want, are you going to pick a public hearing date tonight, so we prepare a notice, or are you gonna have another meeting before you set a public hearing?
I'd say we have another meeting to see the final draft, because then things make, done, all the wordings right, and we have a map to look at. To do over, that's, that's my suggestion.
I'm good doing it now.
Someone make a motion?
Motion to set the public hearing for the proposed solar orders.
For our next meeting, the June 12th meeting?
For the June 12th meeting.
Alright, so George Pushy makes a motion. We set the, um, public hearing for the solar ordinance for June 12th. And Dave Klein, no, Jeff Klein, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Can't believe it.
You have to cross the whole line.
See, that's what happens when I become the...
Great job, Mr. Smith.
That is not...
Do you want me to get your lights back out?
No.
What'd you say?
Nope. Trust me, I cannot watch this for minutes. Alright, we still gotta finish this up, we have new business.
There's still more meeting, I just wanted to...
No, we should, we have to talk about the shipping containers.
I make a motion that we table that until next month.
All we have to do is accept it, it's already written.
It's not written, I want Abby to look at it. I make a motion that the shipping container ordinance go to Abby to be looked at, to make sure it's legally binding and everything's taken care of, and we can put it on next month's agenda. That's my motion.
That won't be in next month's, it's a public meeting.
We do that, go ahead.
Do you have a second? Sorry, we have a motion by Dave Witt that we table the shipping container business. Do you have a second?
And I'll send it to Abby, correct?
Yeah, we're gonna send it to Abby.
And send it to Abby.
I'll second one.
Caleb, let's not second it. All those in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Alright, new business. Michigan Tall Struts Act. Um, are we just approving this? Do we have to approve it?
Why is it even in here?
I hadn't, I wasn't sure.
Is it related to wind?
Wind damage?
No, it's, I think that, it's not, it's something, we decided, and...
It's a statute, I mean, why is it in here?
I was reading, I was wondering, and I saw what this all about.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Uh, I think that that was in there just to let you know that they changed it from 200 feet to 199.
Is that because of airports?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Well, now we're informed, it's just this tall structure.
So we don't have to do a motion or anything for it, then, okay. Was that you that put it in?
No, um, I was questioned about the windmills, the turbine windmills.
Yeah.
And our airport zoning that we have. And our airport zoning right now says a maximum of 200 feet out in Zone 4. And that, they've changed that law now to 199.
Is that a prospective applicant regarding wind turbines?
No, actually it wasn't, thank goodness.
Okay.
Okay, planning commission member discussion, do we have any?
I think we've discussed enough.
Hearing nothing, I'm gonna say we move on.
Second call to the public, right?
Second call to the public. Come on up.
Airport, no mic here, fine.
We can hear you.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you guys, like, good job TV, I'm so happy we moved on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Brown, Sober Road.
Is this gonna take long? Leave a line.
One, uh, first thing is, I'm under the impression that the moratorium is for wind and solar. Is this correct?
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy, okay, that's how it's worded, renewable.
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, I'm just wondering because I haven't heard anything about wind or anything like that.
We haven't done anything.
Or anything with that.
We have enough problems with this one.
I think our airport's gonna help us out with the wind turbine.
I don't think there's even any interest in wind turbines in coming township, I think they did an analysis, and it wasn't a good township for it.
I wouldn't say that, I would not say that if I'm here for it.
But I think, I think there's like a 10-mile radius for the airport, and it should take up the whole township, I think. Okay. Pretty close to it. Because obviously, that's a major concern for all of us, just like the solar is, so we're hoping that that's being looked at pretty hard at this point. Um, and then, just a couple things with this, I didn't know we were gonna talk and make changes, or we were able to, but in the solar, where it says, talks about solar at the beginning, and it's, it says, um, districts, overlay districts, not overlay district. So I'm wondering why that's plural at this point. That was normal.
And if you want me to answer that, I think that part is talking about, it's that section we, we looked at, where it's talking about the multiple overlay districts in the township, but there's only one.
Yeah, we have one that's solar and one that's, uh, overlay district.
So it is not suggesting that there's more than one solar district?
Okay, so it was the other, I got you. Okay, then the other, the only other one was, um, putting some new verbiage in, um, where it's, uh, leaving discretion to the PC board to allow changes, um, when we're talking about, um, like masquerading and things like that at the beginning and that. Um, kind of the way I heard that verbiage was, they could allow or make exceptions to everything that was in the previous paragraph, not just for mass grading, or topography, or the two things that we talked about.
Right, it could be any of the decommissioning requirements, because there was another example that came up, but I'm forgetting what it was right now that Caleb raised, uh, the cables. If you want to use the cables or...
So I guess, I was just making sure the board was aware that it wasn't just the two items that were brought up tonight, it would be all items of decommission, you could waive or make changes or concessions down the road. Because there was basically only two things that we discussed tonight from the board, but the way this is worded, you could... Down the road.
Correct, I, I understand that, I'm just saying down the road, it could be for all items.
And I don't, I don't find it good for 40 years. That is it, and, thank you for your hard work tonight.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Steve Smith, Brown Road. Laura, I think you're wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And appreciate everybody else, too. Um, I don't expect DTE just to walk away from this. I think there's gonna be a big push on the state level, and this is another reason why I'm pushing forth the larger setbacks of at least 500 feet from vacant land. We're not done fighting on this, it's gonna, gonna be a big fight at the state level. Who knows if we're gonna have another, be forced to have another overlay district? Or there's a bill in the state senate now to take this out of our control, or to take it out of our control on agricultural land. So again, I urge the 500-foot setback. Um, I also urge that we do a little bit more on mandatory wildlife corridors because of where this set, where this overlay district is. It's a huge wildlife area. So thank you all for all this hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody else?
I don't think there's anybody else, but...
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do have a motion to adjourn.
Do you want...
I have to go to work.
Do you want to adjourn?
Yeah, your comments, all of them taken?
All?
Aye.
Yep.
This is, this is not my bad time to talk.